Welcome to the August 23rd, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting is being televised via Whitman Hansen Cable. And I would ask you to all join me in pledging to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, you can feel free to come up front, or there's seats over here if you'd like. Yeah. Okay, so, Ms. Ray, would you do us the favor of reading our quite lengthy announcements this evening?
The Town Clerk's office would like to announce that the town of Hanson's poll pads will be used for the first time at early voting at the Town Hall starting January, January, I'm sorry, people. Saturday, August 27th. Poll pads are the latest iPad technology that have been certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to assist both voters and election workers. You may use your driver's license or Mass ID to check in. Using a state-issued ID will speed up the process, but Massachusetts law does not require you to do so. If you wish to state your name and address to check in, you may still do so. We will be using the poll pads at early voting, Election Day, as well as at our Town meetings. Absentee ballots are now available with the Hanson Town Clerk's Office for the September 6th State Primary. Absentee voting is done at the Clerk's Office and can be done up until Friday, September 2nd, 5:00 p.m. deadline. Friday, September 2nd, is by appointment only. For more information, call the Town Clerk's Office at 781-293-2772. There will be a voter registration session held on Saturday, August 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Town Hall. This will be the last day to register to vote for the September 6th State Primary. Any citizen may register to vote at the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Tuesday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., mail-in registration or online. Any resident citizen who will be 18 years of age by September 6th is eligible to register to vote by August 27th. Early voting. The town of Hanson will offer in-person early voting for the September 6th, 2022 State Primary at the Town Hall, 542 Liberty Street. The early voting will be held at the Town Clerk's Office starting Saturday, August 27th. We will be closed Sunday, August 28th, and offer in-person early voting during normal business hours the week before the State Primary. The hours for early voting at Town Hall will be as follows. Saturday, August 27th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday, August 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 30th, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Wednesday, August 31st, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thursday, September 1st, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Friday, September 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to noon. October special Town Meeting will be held on Monday, October 3, 2022, at the Hanson Middle School at 7:30 p.m. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee, Recreation Commission, and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the Town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. Upcoming meeting, Select Board, October 30th, 2022, and Select Board, September 13th, 2022. I apologize, my brain goes in 8,000 different directions. That's it.
That was a lot to read. We appreciate that.
Too much.
That was a lot to unpack, as they say. Okay, moving on to our agenda, which is jam-packed. We have appoint Linda Mulry to Position of Outreach Worker. And I can see Mrs. Collins is here, so I'm assuming the woman to your left, or your right, I guess, is Linda. Nice to meet you, Linda. Did you, either of you want to say a few words to the board?
Could you just tell the board a little bit about Linda?
Okay.
And just to formally request that the Hanson Select Board appoint Linda to fill the position of Outreach Worker at the Hanson Senior Center. Linda has a background in business and for the last 17 years has worked in early childhood education. She comes to us with glowing references from both employers and friends. References particularly note her tireless work ethic, her strong people skills, her professionalism, as well as her kind manner in dealing with others. I feel that these traits lend themselves perfectly to the position of Outreach Worker. And it is my pleasure, if you would appoint her, it would be my pleasure to welcome Linda to the staff at the Senior Center.
Thank you, Mary. And did you want to say anything, Ms. Mulry?
I'm very happy to be here and I'm really looking forward to the position and hopefully be able to help out our seniors and get to know more people.
Well, it's a position that's very much needed, as evidenced by the fact that in a very contentious Town Meeting, we were pinching every penny, the Town thought that it was important to have this position. Mary does an amazing job, and I think we're thrilled to have somebody that's going to support her in doing that amazing job. So she's not a one-man band there, one-woman band. With that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of appointing Linda Mulry to the position of Outreach Worker? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome on board.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome. And then we have Chris Hoffman. Is Chris here? Okay, I don't, it's not necessary that Chris be here, but I, has anybody, pardon please, sir?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman did not respond either to my phone call or my email, so I...
And has anybody on the board met Mr. Hoffman?
Not to my knowledge.
Anybody on our board?
I have met him, but along with the gentleman over here.
Okay, so, just the reason I ask that is, it's no, not any disrespect to Mr. Clemmons, our policy is that we, the board usually needs to meet and have a sense of...
Yes, I did, I did meet him.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Certainly, Mr. Clemmons, if you had anything you wanted to chime in and say?
He's shown, Mr. Hoffman has shown a commendable interest in the work of the Conservation Commission. He's actually assisted one of our other members, Dave Mansfield, in some work on maintaining properties such as Smitty's Bar and has attended several of our regular scheduled meetings and shows the attributes you'd want to see in someone who is at least interested in being an associate member. He's already associated by his interests and activities.
You had me at Smitty's Bar, Mr. Clemmons. Knowing that he helped with that, I love that place. Okay, all right, great. Did anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? All right, great. And rounding out our appointments would be discussing appoint Christopher Ernest to the Economic Development Committee for an annual term ending 6/30/2023. We do have the benefit of having Mr. Ernest here. You may recall at our last meeting, Mr. Ernest was part of the Deregionalization Committee. And I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Ernest, but did you want to give us a five-second bio?
Yeah, absolutely. By day, I'm a CPA, work with a lot of small businesses and mid-sized businesses throughout the South Shore. As you mentioned, was just recently on the Deregionalization Feasibility Study Committee and just looking to get more involved in town, just to give back to the town that's giving a lot to me and my family. So I'd, you know, be interested in being part of the Economic Development Committee. We have a lot of folks in town who are concerned about taxes, right? And tax increases in our spending. One of the things we can do to address that is to bring more revenue into the town and attract more business. So I'd love to be part of this committee, help brainstorm ideas so we can bring business into town and, you know, work through those, work through the related challenges of that. So with that, I'd ask the board to consider my appointment.
Well, I'm very excited that you decided to apply. You know, I've been chairing the committee, we've got a great group of people. But as you know, we recently had an opening, and your background with dealing with small businesses fills a need that we've got. So I would highly recommend it, but I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Just sent it to the table this week.
All right, great. All right, thank you. And so you'll, you will get a letter from our office, and then you need to get sworn in with the Town Clerk. Our next meeting is the 29th, so next Monday, and it would be amazing if you could be at that meeting. If not, understandable, it's only less than a week away, so. Okay, next up is Alden Way, Gray Lane, Stringer Lane, request for Town to accept roadways. So I just want to set a couple of ground rules. I usually have these written out, but I'm just going to kind of, I ask that we not get, I know this is a very emotional subject, and certainly if I were living on that road, I would feel emotional about it. But I ask that we try to remove emotion and talk about facts and talk about rules of engagement, what the Town can and cannot do. And I also would ask you to consider that this board's job is to look out for the interests of the entire Town. So not just one group of people versus another. We've got to balance everybody's needs, which is not always an easy task. I think that we're here primarily because, but I haven't actually seen it because of, it may be in the packet here, because of a letter from Sandra...
We had a request from Sandra Crawford regarding Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane.
Okay, and so is Sandra here, and would she like to come up to the podium?
Yes, she is.
And if you, ma'am, and actually, that's, sorry, that's another rule of engagement. And it's not because we just want to be punitive and make, torture people when they get up to the podium, but for the purposes of the Whitman Hansen Cable, if you can come up to the podium and give your first and last name and where you live so that it can be identified for minutes and also that the cable folks can get it. So ma'am, if you don't mind coming up and just giving us a little background?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Winner, are you able to hear us?
Madam Chair, good evening. Yes, I can, then, for recognizing me at present, and I can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. So Mr. Winner is with our Town Council, he's a land use expert. And Mr. Campbell, who is the Chair of the Planning, are you with us? Okay, fantastic. All right, thank you for joining us. And we also have Mr. DeFrayis, who is our Town Planner. Okay.
Great, my name is Sandra Crawford, I live at 30 Alden Way in Hanson. And I'm, is there anything else you need for the record?
No.
No, okay. I'm here with a lot of the residents from Alden, Gray, and Stringer. And we are here because we have grave concerns about our streets and the inaction, the inaction that has taken place all these years, but probably should have been addressed almost 25 years ago. And it basically came down to the fact that I was not aware that we purchased on a private way or a private street. All my documentation said it was a public road that I, we purchased on, my husband and I. And when I found that out, I've been here almost two and a half years now, well, two and a half, but I found out in July of this year that that wasn't the case. So I spent quite a bit of time at the Town Hall. I think they know my face now, I don't know if that's good or bad. But I have spent some time with Lisa, I have spent some time with the Planning Board, and I've spent an awful lot of time with the minutes since 2011. So I did do some research, and in fact, those three streets are considered private ways on your list. So I did a little research, I found out about your lawsuit that the developer brought against the town of Hanson. I read about what happened. I, we've come to realize quite a few things for the time I spent at that Town Hall. I did come to find out that the Town was forced to send the bond back. Have not been able to get answers as to the amount of bond that was returned to the developer, but still a little confused how we jumped from what I think everybody in that neighborhood thought they lived on a public road. And only to find out that everything now is considered private. I was a little concerned, a lot concerned, about a few things that I came to realize through the minutes, that, I don't know what situation, I don't know, you know what, that is the past, but the past affects now, and it will affect the future. So I, I am concerned about a few things I found in the minutes. I know that the, the person that owned our home and a few other individuals kind of on a regular basis attended the Planning Board meetings, not yours, and seemed to have gotten frustrated. Things, it's almost like they weren't, nobody was listening, and nobody cared. But the Town was involved, and yes, this is an emotional thing we're all going through right now. And I found many things in the minutes that really disturbed me. And they came shortly after evidently that lawsuit prompted a settlement that was supposed to have taken place, a work that was to be done before the developer got his money. And two of the engineers, one for the Town, one for the developer, all said everything was hunky-dory. But during that same meeting that took place, I did find a letter from the Highway Department that things were not done correctly even by the Town. Yet, it's been a lot of talk about that developer not doing what he was supposed to, what the Town did not do correctly, how it wasn't rectified way back in 2011. But I can tell you this, it is not the fault of the residents that live on that street. It was not their responsibility to fix what was broken or not repaired or not done correctly. And it seems that just time went on. I have not been there for 25 years, but I've gotten to know many of the people. And life, life gets in the way sometimes, and you're trying to raise a family, you have children, and time just went on, and nobody seemed to pay attention. But when I found all this information out, I did approach. I approached the residents, and I don't think a lot of them knew what it was like to live on a private way and the liability that comes into play, that none of them, and certainly not my husband and I, were expecting that. Certainly not at our age. So we did do up a little petition, and it was presented, and that's basically how this all started. And we would like to know where you all stand. We know where we stand, we would like some attention given to the roads. And the reason we kind of prompted this whole thing is we don't want the roads to end up in poor shape like they did years ago, when a school bus couldn't even pass. And the roads are getting a lot of wear and tear now. We have more drivers on the street, we have the construction of a house at the very end of Gray. And as a matter of fact, the, the company that is doing the tarring for this town at the middle school happened to park their trailers on our street for two weeks in a row while they got their tar job done. Now, those are the things that, it's not the fault of the resident, but it is the fault of the Town not to have rectified these issues, and that's how we all kind of feel. But time has come where we don't want to live on one of those roads that is not safe to travel on. And we were kind of hoping you could divulge what's going on with the Town to that effect.
I'm not, I just want to make sure we're setting the right, you know, tone here.
Right.
There's, I'm not sure what we'd be divulging to you.
Well, what your thoughts are.
About this issue right now. Yeah.
Well, there was a different board here, you're right. And the changing of hands is always suspect, but in a small town, that is how your government works.
Well, I mean, I don't know if it's suspect, people decide they're going to move on with their lives.
Oh, no, no, no. It makes you wonder that nobody has taken responsibility. When I say suspect, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. But what I am saying is that even though you do a wonderful job for running this town, when people leave, it's left behind. And then there is no continuation of probably what should have happened years ago.
Well, I think, well, one of the things that I hope to find out from our Council and from the Town Planner and from the Chair of Planning is, in fact, what is the Town's responsibility for this property? I do understand what, what your opinion is and what your hopes are.
Yeah.
And I empathize with that, I can certainly understand that I would feel the same way. But that doesn't, you know, one of the things that we need to think about is, you know, if we were to wave a magic wand and do what you're suggesting, which is that the Town take responsibility for this road and fix it up, there's a number of things that may be unintended consequences as a result of that decision.
Mm-hmm.
We're setting a precedence. There are a lot of private ways in Hanson. And we are a town that's struggling financially. We've had to do overrides for schools. I don't know where the money to, I don't know how much it would cost, but I'm, I've heard ballpark figures, you know, in the millions of dollars to fix things up. I don't know where that money would come from, I'm just being sincerely honest with you. It's not like we have a couple million dollars sitting around. So, so I think we have to figure out what is the Town's responsibility? And then, what is, what is the right thing to do here to effectuate what you guys are hoping to see happen, but to mitigate the costs to the average taxpayers, right? Because to play the devil's advocate, I'd, to play the devil's advocate, I'd say, you know, I'm living on a road that's public, why should I be paying for these people who live on a private road to get their road fixed up? And, and so, and I know one of the arguments a lot of times with folks with the private ways is, well, I pay taxes, I'm not, you know, getting all of the services. But the Town does, does plow and grade. You're not in a situation where you'd be graded because it's paved. But one of the things that keep in mind is the Town gets Chapter 90 money, which is what we use to fix our roads up, based on the public ways that we have, what's been accepted as a public way. So currently, we don't get any Chapter money, it's like this conundrum, right? It's this, which came first, the chicken or the egg? We don't get any Chapter money to fix that road up because it's not a public way like we would for all the roads that have been accepted. And I don't, you know, I don't know how fruitful it's going to be for us to go back and try to figure out, you know, was it the developer, was it the Town, was it maybe? No, and I know you're not suggesting, I didn't get that, but I'm just saying, I don't, you know, like, it, it may be helpful as far as informing how we should deal with these things going forward as a Planning Board and as a Town. But, but anyway, Mr. Winner, did you have any things that you wanted to say to kind of address?
It'd be a little premature for me to jump in at this point. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I know my name's up on the screen, but Brian Winner from E. T. Almanac Costa, Town Council's office. I'd like to hear a little bit more, and not to put anybody on the spot, about the planning side. And just to explain why I'm suggesting that is that, you know, there's, there's sort of a legal architecture that all these questions arise in. And as you know, you know, there's certain ways that are laid out in a certified Town Meeting that are public ways, and then there's private ways that were laid out as part of the subdivision, other kinds of ways. And so, it's a very complicated area of the law in terms of what the roles and responsibilities are of all the people that are involved in something like this. And the Chair mentioned a little bit, go about unintended consequences. Let me just flag another one, because one of them that pops into my mind in all of these situations when we talk about how does a private way get improved, or the financial consequences. I don't know if there's a homeowners association or any kind of organization that, that governs this, this way. I don't know who owns the way, if it butters all on the way, or if it's, it's still kept by some third party. But oftentimes, the burden here is, well, where's the money going to come from? But when it, depending on how you approach it or look at it, it can become very circular when you look at all the people who have an interest in the way, whether or not the Town would play a role in that, if the Town played a role in that, where would that funding come from? And that often leads to betterments. Betterments are going to be assessed on the property owners, who are the people that you want to pay for in the first place. And so this is a very complicated area, so we need to know a lot about the history, we need to know a lot about the circumstances before I can start giving opinions on, you know, particular avenues that the board may wish to explore. So I think I would benefit hearing a little bit from the planning side, that if that's okay with the board.
Yep, fair enough. And Mr. Campbell, Mr. DeFrayis, I'm not sure which of you wants to, if you can at least tell us what you understand of the history and what you guys have done, if anything, in terms of having a conversation about this and what decisions have been made?
Sure, Mr. DeFrayis, I'm there, we can go first?
Sure.
Sorry, Tony, to make you get up there. Ma'am, you can stay there if you'd like, if, you know, because it's pretty likely that we'll, we'll end up having you pop up again.
Son of a gun. And Tony knows I'm not a public speaker.
You did a great job. I think you did.
Yeah, I didn't break down.
She was very nervous about coming up here. Well, obviously, this was before my time, so I can only go by any historical information that we might have in the files. And Mr. Campbell may have some more information, so. This subdivision was approved in 1997. Then the, the developer went through and completed the road. What I've read is that there was some deficiencies in the road. So the Town hired, he wanted to go for roadway acceptance, there was deficiencies in the road. The Town hired a outside consultant to review and take a look at the road and determine what those deficiencies were. That company did a less-than-stellar job, I guess. So then the Town, the Planning Board decided that, look, we're not going to give you back your bond money because there's still deficiencies in the road. And so then that developer filed a lawsuit to get his money back. I believe that part of the settlement was that, I believe, a second company was hired to determine what the deficiencies were. The developer corrected the deficiencies to the satisfaction of the courts and the Planning Board. And at that time, they released his money. They, the Planning Board retained $6,500 of the bond, which they used $3,500 for the second review engineer and the $3,000 for costs and fees. So at this point, there is no bond money for this project. And Mrs. Crawford has done, you know, an extensive amount of research through the minutes and so forth. She may even know it better than I do, because, you know, she's had the chance to read through all those minutes. But that's the history that I, just reading through, and there's a lot of information, it's a pretty big file. Now, I don't know if Mr. Campbell has any more historical information that he could provide, if he was even, if he dealt with this at all. Around 2000, this, the court case took place around 2011, 2012. And at that time, there was a transition going on in the Planning Board. There was the loss of the Town Planner at the time. And then there was also a transition of the board itself.
Yeah, Mr. Lindquist was on.
Yeah, quite a few members resigned. And then at that point, the previous homeowner of Mrs. Crawford's house, I believe, was appointed and got on the board. And maybe he did it as she's frustrated, maybe he did it as frustration, being frustrated, trying to move things forward. So that's, that's the history that I have as far as what I've read about this project.
That's helpful, if you might just stick in there and think of a couple questions. Mr. Campbell, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Sure, and so, to the Town Clerk's point, because some of the changes, some, certain changes in the planning, in the Town Clerk's position, you know, the Town Planner's position.
Excuse me, Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell, you're getting kind of glitchy. A little glitchy. Closer to the mic.
One second, one second. How's that, is that better?
Much better. Don't tell us you had your earbuds on trying to do this. Come on. Okay, you all set?
Eighteen guy, can you hear me okay?
Excellent, that's perfect. Yep.
Where are my audios coming out?
Apparently, he can't hear us, so.
Give me just a moment, I'm going to go through my settings.
Okay, we can hear you, you can't hear us?
No.
No. I'm sorry, this is so painful.
Oh, is that, is that any better? Oh, is that, is that any better?
We can hear you, but can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay, great, then it's perfect, okay.
IT guy having IT troubles, imagine that.
The IT.
So the, uh, so, so we, we have had a, uh, over the past, I would say, uh, ten to twelve years in the knowledge, letting the board itself, the elected board, but also the planning department, we have had a few changes that have taken place over these years, uh, as well as just regular elections. Um, and, and, uh, I, you know, there was a point that was being about whether or not this, this, um, private road, or there's a few others in town, whether or not they have been, uh, quote unquote, priority. Uh, I will say that if, even if you just look at the minutes for the, on the town website, if you type in Alden Way, you will see that this, uh, as well as a few other projects have come up almost quarterly. We may get a point to have discussions about these different projects that are kind of what we would consider to be loose ends along the town. Um, there, there was a resident that was from Alden Way that was on the board. We probably served with that president and, and, and one of the reasons that drove him, as well as many other people that get elected to boards or appointed to boards, uh, was personal experience. Uh, unfortunately, you know, the, the deficiencies that exist down in Alden Way prevented that from getting past the final portion of the rules and regulations of the planning board of the town. Uh, it, it, it got to the point where, uh, the developer thought that they were finished with the project. They requested their bond monies to be returned. Um, it, it had too many missing seats, if you go back through the minutes at that point, and then it went into litigation. And, and unfortunately, the litigation, it, it came back as a detriment to the town because the litigation basically proved that it was satisfactory partial completions. Um, I don't know if that was the actual, you know, judgment on it, but that is where it ended, where the litigation for, uh, was in favor of the developer. Uh, for everybody that lives on a private way in Hanson, or anybody that lives on subdivision, uh, the streets are not public ways. You know, our rules and regulations, eight dot five page fifty-two of the Hanson, uh, rules and regulations that states that streets are not public ways. And it, it, it spells out quite, um, effectively, um, the reasons why, uh, it has to go before approval at the town, um, town meeting, has to go before approval from the planning board to bill an appointment that had been planned before the town meeting. So it's a fairly lengthy process. Um, so Alden Way and the subdivision itself, and not just Alden Way, but the others down there, the others that are down there have, and they have never been able to, be able to be advanced to town meeting, uh, because of the fact of some of the deficiencies that happened throughout the project, and they were never addressed.
So can we, can we address that, Mr. Campbell? Because I think if we're going to try to find a path forward, we have to identify what are the deficiencies and what can be done about the deficiencies to advance things?
Sure. The, the progression forward at this point, and I'm sure that the town planner would, would speak on this as well. The progression forward obviously would be to get a survey done of just exactly what the deficiencies are and how they, uh, how they would impact the town. Um, you know, if you, if you've got something as simple as, um, you know, uh, washing out of the drainage that's down underneath the roadway, that, that's a fairly simple thing, just for the drainage to be cleaned out. And, you know, that, that's something that, uh, is a minimal cost, you know? Unfortunately, uh, if you look at some of the deficiencies that existed back at the end of that project, there were a lot, uh, there were a lot more detrimental as far as cost due with us having to pay, especially if the town was to have to pay, because the town has to pay prevailing wage, which is a, a, a lot more than normal costs from a developer or from a construction, uh, crew or what have you. Um, so the, there's a whole different labor aspect to it, procurement aspect to it. Um, so, but there, we, we would need to identify exactly what those are, and, and, and that, that has a cost due as well, just to do a study of the, of the, of the subdivision, to find out how does it sit today? Cause we can only vote on how it sits today or look at how it sits today and see what, what the impact would be. It, it, from my history, going back to two thousand sixteen, when I was elected, uh, my history is that this project has been one of those that we've always tried to keep our, uh, finger on the pulse just to see, you know, exactly what it is that's happening. What can we do? Um, it's, it's, it is a, a pipe mire because of the fact that it is privately owned. So the town itself, uh, is very little that we could do, uh, without, you know, trespass or something of that nature. Um, I, somebody have?
Mr. Campbell, so, uh, uh, as a very preliminary step, regardless of who ends up paying to have these things addressed, we need to have a comprehensive assessment of what needs to be done to that private way. Mr. De Freys?
Uh, the town, back in two thousand nineteen, did pay environmental partners to do an assessment, um, and a report. Now, obviously, it's two thousand twenty-two. But in two thousand nineteen, they create, they created an assessment of what they, what they saw as far as the drainage. And that would become, it, step one, that would be, you could either use that report as it stands in two thousand nineteen and say, okay, here's the deficiencies. Uh, it's like buying a used car. You, you can do, you're gonna do your due diligence to see, do I want this car as is? Or are there things I need to fix before I take it on? Same thing with this road in this subdivision. You can use the two thousand nineteen report, or you could go back to environmental partners and say, okay, let's do a two thousand twenty-two report, give us an in-depth, because they, they talked about the drainage, they talked about a little bit, uh, a couple of other things. In-depth report, here's what you'll take on. So before you move forward, you'll know what, if any deficiencies are there that the town would have to take on once you accept it as a public way.
And, um, do, do you have any, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, um, do you have any sense of how much it would cost to refresh a report like this?
Uh, well, it, it's tough to say. I mean, environmental partners, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a couple of thousand dollars for sure, you know?
Are you saying that glitly or really a couple of thousand dollars?
No, I would say probably a couple of thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
So you're not talking twenty thousand dollars?
I don't believe, no, I don't, I don't see twenty thousand dollars. Uh, but I see somewhere between probably five and ten for a company that size and what they would have to do.
And who paid for this, uh, this assessment?
That mu- the monies for that assessment came out of what was remaining in the bonds.
Okay.
So at the time, well, at the time, you know what? That cost, that was thirty, that was thirty-five hundred dollars, you know? But that was, you know, maybe more just of a visual.
So it's gone up, it could have gone up more than a hundred percent?
It could have gone up, yeah.
All right, now, Chair, can I ask a question?
Please.
Joe, it's Jim Hickey. You talked, uh, or you spoke, when you just spoke, you spoke about prevailing wage and this and that, and, you know, you, you, you made a, you know, a, a four-minute, uh, I'll say spiel not to, um, um, you know, to come up with a better answer. But in two thousand nineteen, something was done three years ago, this woman went back to two thousand eleven. What's wrong with the street? What, what, what has changed in the three years, Tony? What's wrong with the street?
There's a list right here. It's all, it's all environmental partners.
Right, but they're giving us a whole bunch of.
It's base, it's a lot, it's basins, drainage, all kinds of, yeah.
Okay, so.
So it comes, it, it comes out, you can take that, if you wanna take that road on today, you can.
Okay.
If you wanna, if you wanna move forward, if you wanna move forward, try, and Mr. Winner might speak on this one. But if you wanna take on that road, you can, and take it on as a private.
Well, I'm not saying make it a public way.
And make it, you could take it on as a public way. It's just be aware that any deficiencies that are on that road, let's say whether it's the pavement or the sidewalks or the drainage or whatever, you're willing to assume all of it, and then once you take it on as a public way, all those things that are wrong, the town will be willing to fix. Whether it's repave the road, fix the sidewalks, put in, uh, new ADA.
But at the beginning, in two thousand eleven, when it went to court, the, um, developer, we, the town, got somebody else in to check to say, yeah, it's okay. And then it turned out it wasn't okay, even with the third party checking on the situation.
The courts felt, and I think Mr. Uh, Mr. Campbell could speak this, I think the court felt that they were satisfied, okay?
Okay.
And they're saying, we're satisfied, he's done what he's supposed to, give him back his money. That, just to, I'm paraphrasing, but that's pretty much what it came down to. Give him his money, and that's what the town had to do.
But, but the courts weren't saying, and you need to now take it on as a public road. Like, that's their ability to.
No.
Kisses rain.
Can I ask a question about, I, does, outside of all this, does the road meet the qualifications for egress and turnaround for fire trucks and all the stuff that's supposed to happen when you're making a public road? Does it meet those requirements?
It met, it met the standards of the subdivision control law. I've seen that written in reports, that it met the standards of the subdivision control law.
So I just, I just wanna put, point this out, cause I would, I happen to be on the planning board for a lot of very similar petitions. I was the chair of it for a couple of years, and I've seen many of you here. And it's really a shame that we're, we're still here. I can say, um, we've always used Alden Way as the exact reason how not to build a development or a subdivision.
Oh, it's good to know.
Um, I cannot empathize enough with.
You mean the road, not the?
Well, how to just oversee a subdivision being developed, how to interact with subdivision, how to use our own town resources to go back and check. In fact, because of Alden Way and the horror stories, I've heard stories of school buses trying to go down there, and then the sewer cap giving out, and then just kind of getting stuck there. I don't know the validity of that, I've just heard that story so many times, I, I just take it as, as truth at this point. Um, it's one of the reasons why when I was on the chair, the, the, the planning board, we used to force the developers to come down with us. We hold a meeting and say, okay, well, I'm taking out my measuring stick, and I'm gonna see how far down this grading goes. And if it doesn't work, guess what? You're tearing it up, we're not going to the courts. You're gonna tear it up right now, we're gonna do it the right way. And we forced a lot of developers to do that because of the lessons that I have historically learned by watching all of you. Um, so it's very admirable that you're here and, uh, you know, I, I served with, with the member who lived on Alden Way for all those years. He left and then came back because he wanted to try and serve again. Um, it, it, it's, it's a shame. And the thing that we keep coming back to, and I really wanna be able to help and, and, and try to find a way to solve this, the, the issue that we keep coming back to, though, is exactly what you're talking about, cause that lesson hasn't changed, or that, that, that fact hasn't changed, which is the courts, for some reason, determined that it met the code to be justified, to be, to, to give this person all their money back. So it basically cleared this person of any type of liability or any type of issue. So now what the town is, and it hasn't changed in all those years, that, cause I think it was what, six, five or six years ago, when, when last time I had seen all you folks? Um, once the town accepts it, the town owns it, all the liabilities that come along with it. And the, these, these figures, it, it says it's kind of in bold that it doesn't include reconstruction of the, of the road itself. So it, it might cost ten thousand dollars to fix the piping. It does, it might cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, to fix the road to, to put that back to where it needs to be as well. And the town has to own that. The other way to do it is to go through town meeting, uh, and, and request a betterment. And I think that our, our town attorney here can better speak to that because I, I don't wanna misspeak on that, but I definitely think that there's an avenue there if you wanna go down that road, cause it hasn't, no pun intended, but it hasn't, um, is that, that mechanism hasn't changed yet. You can go to town hall, you can go to town meeting, you can ask for a betterment, ask that the town accept the road, eh, but there are financial consequences to that as well. And I don't think any of those avenues have changed over the past few years. So this is where I would kick it back, but this, Alden Way has been, i- it's been the, the, the go-to lesson learned for how planning and zoning and all of those committees need to hold people accountable because it is absolutely a shame that we're in this, this position over, over twenty years, ten years, twenty years.
Nobody wants to hear that they're living on a street that's the poster child for how to do things better.
Well, no, that's why I, I empathize with the idea that we need to find a way to help, but it is the truth.
So, 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 um, we've got this assessment, we might need to refresh it to see what needs to, what else needs to be done. What's clear is improvements need to be made, fixes need to be made, uh, before the town could, um, could accept it as a public way. Um, and in order to do that, you have to look at the funding, right? So who's gonna fund it? The town or the folks that live there? As Mr. Weeks, um, alluded to, a betterment loan is a possible way. As far as I know, we've never done that in town for a road. Um, the only thing that I'm aware that we've done it for was for water at the end of, the end of, for, um, public water at the end of Woodbine Road. Um, so we've got some, um, knowledge, some history of how we, we did that. Um, it would require two-thirds of the people, um, that would be impacted to agree to that betterment. Um, and it would be spread over some period of time. It would also, uh, uh, require town meeting to approve it. Um, if the betterment isn't approached, the other, um, other possibility is for, um, it to go to town meeting. I, um, believe that the chances would be very bleak, um, of, of town meeting approving, um, spending any money to improve a, a private way to bring it up to where the town could accept it. Um, so I, I, those are really the two paths forward in terms of getting the road to a point where you're gonna feel good about it, where it could be accepted as a public way, and then we move on and you guys don't have to think about it anymore. It would become, you know, the town taking care of it. Um, Mr. Winner, is there anything at this point you'd like to chime in and add? Or cor- you know, kind of clarify or?
I, I would, and, uh, I think the conversation has kind of circled back to my original comments, actually, so it's a good time, uh, for me to jump in. So, uh, two things, um, uh, that I'd like to know. One is, based on everything I've heard, the planning board process is concluded. There, there's nothing left within the jurisdiction of the planning board here that's open, uh, for them to act upon or to decide this whole subdivision process, for better or for worse, mind you, this is not a, a judgment call on my part here. It's just a, a, a legal conclusion under subdivision control. So that's not where the, the action is gonna be on this anymore. The action is gonna be on the select board side, the town meeting side, and the third party, which is the residents of this, this neighborhood. Um, so the question comes back to identifying the deficiencies, figuring out how those deficiencies could be cured to the point where the board, this board, could actually lay out the way as a public way if it's, uh, fit to at that point, and for town meeting to accept it. Uh, and that's where we've come full circle here because even if we were able to refresh that report, um, or get a, a new report and identify what those costs are, and by the way, typically that report comes from the homeowners association and the developer or the residents. It's not typically something that the town itself goes out and hires someone to investigate on a private road. The petitioners who seek to make a private road public are the advocates. They're the ones that typically fund that, bring it to the town and say, this is what needs to be done, and this is how we're gonna do it. But let's say that there's some cooperation here, and that report gets made and it identifies X cost. Well, that's just for the improvements. Um, someone would still have to fund that. So you'd be looking at some sort of, uh, you know, town meeting cooperation if it's through approval of betterment or some other mechanism. Um, but I, I'm guessing based on what I've heard tonight, it's not free cash. Uh, so that money's gonna have to come from somewhere. A betterment just ultimately gets assessed against the, the existing homeowners. Um, so if they're not paying for it on one side, they're paying for it on the other side. So this is, um, a slippery slope here. And then when it goes to town meeting, so let me just break down the, the public way acceptance process. So a petition gets filed in the town, and its first stop is the select board. The select board then makes a vote and issues an order to lay out the way in accordance with a plan. So someone's gonna have to need to generate this stamped engineered plan to show the actual, you know, layout of this road that they're proposing, uh, give that to the board, the board then votes to lay it out. It goes to the planning board under another statute, so they're gonna get to review it under their standards. And then ultimately, it goes to town meeting. And now you're not just laying out the road as shown on a plan, which will then get recorded, the town clerk and registry, but you have to obtain the rights in the way. So we need to identify who actually owns this land or the rights of the land. We're talking about the fee or the easement. So there's potentially costs associated with that, too. Uh, and then when and if the town acquires that interest and lays out the road, then it has a perpetual right. So now you're talking about not just those two front cost items, but every cost item going forward from there out because you're now responsible for maintaining that as a public way. Um, so there's a whole lot to consider baked into, you know, what's otherwise a simple problem, fix the road, how to fix the road. There are a lot of layers to this that are gonna require, I think, some, some, uh, some hard thinking and some number crunching. So first things first, you need to know what the numbers look like.
Uh, Mr. Winner, can you expand a little bit for those, um, who don't have a decoder ring on, um, what you meant by the easements and, you know, and how that private way works where folks own to the middle of the road and would have to get permission and all that?
Sure, and I was intentionally, um, being vague on that, cause that's even more complicated. But in a nutshell, the layout is just the layout, it's a drawing on a plan. But in a nutshell, the layout is just the layout, it's a drawing on a plan. It, it's not a property right, it's just a piece of paper that gets recorded and shows where the road is. So that doesn't mean the town owns anything. That's just a planning tool, it's a planning device. In order for the town to actually go out and own this road and do work on the road and under the road and all that, the town needs to own something, it needs to have a property interest. So there's basically two forms of that. One is, you know, what people sometimes refer to as a right of way, you know, it's an easement. We own the right to pass and repass on behalf of the public. Uh, and, but the other way we can, you know, obtain the rights in the road is the fee itself, meaning the land itself. Um, and this is where it gets a little complicated because you need to know who owns all those little sticks in the bundle. So in some cases, um, the abutters own to the center along. Uh, so, you know, the abutter on the left side owns to that side of the middle, the abutter on the right side owns to the middle, which means we have to obtain rights from every single abutter along all these ways. Um, and so we, we need to research that and draft the appropriate instruments to do that. But in some cases, uh, the abutters just have, you know, easement themselves and the fee is actually in a completely another name altogether. Um, so those are all things we have to look into. But ultimately, town meeting, if it ever got that far, would be making multiple decisions. One would be to lay out the way as, as, you know, as ordered by the select board. Two would be, uh, on the funding for any improvements that need to be done and a betterment. And three would be to authorize the board to obtain through gift, eminent domain taking or purchase an easement or a fee interest in the land itself, that's the road. Um, so those are all cost items, those are all, um, not only transaction costs, you know, you're going to have to pay for lawyers and title attorneys to look in all this stuff. Um, but there's a, an actual cost in because, you know, maybe the land is worth zero. Maybe it's gifted to the town, but those are all just means. Those are things that would be, be looked into.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Winter. And I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell, I know you had your little, little emoji hand up for a while. Um, so did, did you have something you wanted to chime in with?
I did, so going back to the, to the request in 2019 that we had put forward to get kind of a better understanding, you know, we did dive into some of the previous process that, uh, to council's point about the plan, whether or not the planning board has any, uh, you know, a bite, bite in, in this, on this bone. Uh, it actually does, uh, we, the town, the town head's planning board or planning office, it's never received a certificate of completion, it's never received a final as-built. You know, sadly and unfortunately, it was a, a, you know, a house of cards that just fell down where the, the developer was allowed to release that last, release a last lot before his own, uh, which, which basically made it so that the town had nothing to hold on to, you know? So it was a, uh, to go to the building permit office, to the, and say the occupancy permits and the building, it was already too far gone at that point, you know, it was already heading down south. So, um, through the approval process, you know, people were asking about that. Uh, one of the board members was asking, you know, this, the, the superintendent of roads needs to weigh in on the modern apartment utilities. So council spoke on that as far as, uh, just how, how involved it is to get that report. The 2019 report that we have, it was basically the last stake in the game and we couldn't possibly have anything to be able to do. And that was just to refresh our own records. Uh, we are eight years past, uh, eight years past quote unquote, um, you know, finalization of the project. Um, there is some processes that are in there as far as decision from the planning department, the planning board. Uh, I, I, it's still, it's a process, uh, to completely go back to the drawing board and say, okay, well, what do we have? You know, so there's, there's a few different avenues that we can approach here. Uh, but it, it does have, have, it has a lot of people that need to weigh in on it, you know?
Sure, sure, okay.
And at the same point, I'm sorry, at the same point, what I wanted to, what I wanted to point out was, at the same point, you know, the town, the board of selectmen still vote to plow. They still vote to, you know, break, like we were saying earlier on, uh, still vote to break and take care of the road. So the, the, right now, there isn't a big hole in the ground, highway went down there a few years back as, uh, uh, Select Weeks was talking about. There was a, um, you know, there is, there is minimal work that the town does complete on, on all of the railways, not just Alden Way. So we, we do address them as fast as we can, as best as we can, within the limitations that we have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Um, um, so I'm sorry, I had, um, Mrs. Smol, Ms. Smolinski had-
Ah, I know.
Sorry about that.
Can I just say?
Um, well, can, do, do you mind just?
Well, I just hope that I don't like overrun from things, but so I am a resident along with other ones that have bought my house first.
Um, so I know who you are, but can you say who you are?
Cheryl Damon, 37 Stringer Lane. So 20-something, five years ago, we came into that neighborhood. And I deal, Laura knows me and I know Laura in the past, and I deal with just hearing things, understanding what I hear, passing on the information, but saying, oh, this isn't good or this is not good and this is what we all need to do. So in the very beginning, I will tell you honestly, my husband and I and Mark Tedeschi stood there in my backyard and said, um, this is a beautiful neighborhood, you know, public in the, in the town, sidewalks, can't have a build around here, can't, you know, my, my dad, he has overseeing this, great. So a lot of things had happened even outside of this big problem. So it did become a big problem and we had all gone to a couple of meetings. And I know all these dates, it seems so long ago. I think the last one, I'm hearing 2019, I think the last one we all went to was 2015. And I asked everybody what I got out of that 2015 meeting and every answer that I always got coming up here is there's a lawsuit and we can't help you, we can't put your lights on. I was actually the one that got the whole fix for the school bus. And that's because when I came up here, I was told that, that you guys can't help me. I understood that, so I sat on the phone for four hours with the, the developer's attorney. But then we kept being told that this is all being worked on and this will all be settled. And we never, ever, ever were told that we were not going to be a public road in Hanson, Massachusetts. So then now I'm hearing this lawsuit was over in 2011. How can this all make sense? Because I didn't get anything. None of us got anything that this is such a disaster. Our roads are not that bad. I don't understand, but we, we as residents of this town and live in a beautiful neighborhood, that that's what we paid for, not a private way. I feel bad if there's people that wanted to have a private way and said, oh, this isn't good, you know, this dirt. We did not, none of us, none of us. And yes, the builder, he did his part, he did wrong. But we, we, and I understand the planning board people that are gone and not here, the bottom line is, that's what we were told, that's why we're coming to you. I welcome all of you to hope that passed, that's what I need to understand, the past. Why didn't we get any letters? Because then maybe we would not be sitting here now as is, as low in the ground as we think we're going to be in a private road. And then, and then for past, present and future. Like what can we all do to, to, to try to make this better?
I don't think anybody would have sent a letter. Um, I don't think there's, Mr. Campbell, can you address that?
I, I can absolutely address that. So the communications that took place back, uh, between 2015 and 2019 in regards to any movement that the planning board was going to do, our, uh, let's leave, go back, how are we going to go back to town planners? So two town planners that we had before, Mr. DeFray, who's wonderful, uh, two town planners back. Our town planner went out of her way to contact Mr. Tedeschi, completely out of her way. She went above and beyond only to have every single door slammed in her face and roadside put up whenever she tried to communicate with the, with the developer, Mr. Tedeschi. Including in 2019 when we were talking about trying to have environmental partners go out there. The board at the time and our just previous town planner did the same thing. Uh, as far as communication goes down to residents of the neighborhood, uh, back in the 2015 timeframe, it was requested at that point that people tried to develop an HOA. And the HOA is supposed to work with the developer. So that was kind of like a, you know, it'd be nice if we have some people we can communicate with. I'll put it out there again today, I'm pretty sure that the planner would love to be able to have, uh, folks down there that are, are, you know, pseudo HOA, um, that, that could be, you know, they could go back and forth. But if anybody has any questions in regards to, you know, where does the lack of communication go or where does the hotline? It's 110% with nobody except for that developer.
Okay, but Mrs. Damon's saying, would we have told the residents, hey, guess what? Um, that road's not going to be accepted, like is there some, she's saying they never got anything saying that it was a private way. And I'm saying I don't know that there is a requirement for us to, I don't know, I don't, not sure, what is the?
Uh, well, there's communications that usually happen within, within the, like we said, the HOA. Uh, and our, and our former board member, um, that, that was a resident down there was, usually offered quite a bit of information with, with local residents that were down there. Um, I believe that he attempted at some point to, uh, kind of kick the dust on an HOA, getting something going. Unfortunately, on the planning board and I believe that he's not the town. Uh, so I, I, if there is something or if there's some residents that are down there that would like to get together and communicate with the planning office, I mean, that, we would love that.
Okay, and so, um, Mrs. Damon, I, so it's seven o'clock. Um, I appreciate there's a ton of you here and I'm sure people have things that they want to say. So I absolutely have no problem, but let's try to keep it-
Absolutely, I just have one other question and then we can all, so when you, so we're so confused when you say, who owns the road? Like how, how do we even know who owns it then? Does Tedeschi own it? Does the town of Hanson own it? Like I guess I think if we can go from there, for that, for that answer.
Out of here, I can answer that.
Yes.
The residents own the road to the middle of the road.
Is that documented? Like I think that's what we need to just, like, not tonight, not tonight.
It would show on our deed.
Our deed says public road, yes.
Deed says public road.
Yes, it does, all of ours. So I know it's time, but I think this is what we all need to understand, this is like, yeah.
And the conservation recognizes that they were going to accept this as a public road.
Yes.
It's in the orders, the ordinance of the conservation.
Well, conservation doesn't have jurisdiction over that.
Car, car, I, I ain't going to mention this if you don't mind, I found this out after the fact too. When Regan moved, there was, he, he was very close to not-
I'm trying not to mention names, but I can see what you're, we're just going to go there, so.
You're going to go there, I could, I, let me refer to him as the former owner of our house.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, that's good, that's good. He needed a release from the conservation commission on the roads and on the sidewalks and the public water. He needed a release signed by your conservation commission-
In order to sell it to?
In order to sell it. Now, I didn't hear about that till July. And, um, so there is, conservation is a very active part of that subdivision.
Well, I'm not saying that they don't play a role, but I'm saying they don't decide what's accepted as a public way or what is-
No, 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 but we don't own to the middle, who did that? It's not on my deed.
Yes, we don't. That's the general rule of thumb for private ways, so I think that's why, Mr.-
But the point is, none of our paperwork shows private ways. And if it was a private way, it, there should have been, the first question I asked, is there an HOA here? The answer was no.
Right, there, so, uh, so I, I think, um, more, more information is going to be needed, a little bit more, you know, um, you know, I, I think you're hearing, even to start this ball going forward, legal fees, um, additional stu, engineering, like I, I, I think at the very least you guys need to think about having an HOA at this point. To, you, you've got to think about organizing together and getting an HOA. Because what we're hearing is there's no one point of contact for the town to work with, right? So you might agree that you are okay with X, Y, or Z that we're going to do or that we're going to, but there, there's no HO, there's no organization for us to work with. And that, and, and, and if you don't want to form the HOA, that's fine. Um, you can continue to operate, you know, as a organized group of, of homeowners, that's fine. Um, I, I'm, I'm struggling with what our next, um, what did you say? Oh.
I, I just was wondering if I could say something.
Sure, please come up and, and, um, if you can let us know your name and, um, yep.
Um, Carol Jensen, I live at, um, 183 Gray Lane, I've lived there for 25 years. I've been here throughout all of this. Um, and I understand boards have changed and things have changed. But bottom line is, we came to Hanson to live in this beautiful neighborhood. We trusted the town that they were going to, you know, abide by this builder to do what's right, you know, to make sure that things were passed and obviously it wasn't. That we held, you, you, the town held our money. At one point, I thought it was like 80,000 at one point, um, held our money. And then in the last so many years, which I just found out, it's all gone. Um, so I feel like obviously this isn't the forum, but I feel like we do need to have another meeting. There's a lot of things that have come up in minutes. There's a lot of things that have transpired that probably nobody on this board knows, um, that Sandy has found and that we as, as, we have in our covenants, we have in our deeds and things like that. And I don't feel comfortable with an HOA. I didn't buy into a, a public road, I bought into a road that for years, you're saying there's all these problems with the road, I don't even know about them. The road looks fine. To me, if you go down half the roads in Hanson, you're not going to probably see anything different. I think we're throwing a lot of big money numbers out there and that's not probably warranted right now. I feel like we were at a point years ago where our, our neighborhood, I thought, was very close to being accepted. And I don't know how it's fallen apart this bad that we have to go looking at an HOA or coming up with hundreds of thousands of dollars to correct this terrible neighborhood, which in my eyes is one of the nicest neighborhoods that people want to move into. We pay probably over the last, our neighborhood over the last 25 years have paid 4.8 million dollars towards this town. Our, our neighborhood alone probably pays 250 to 275,000 dollars in taxes. So I am just getting a little upset sitting here, listening to all these things that we need to do because I feel like for years we've been asking for help and asking for, you know, what can we do to get this done? And we paid environmental partners a lot of money out of our bond and now we're being asked to pay more money, which, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the thing is.
We said, A, more money needed to be paid.
But we may need to come up with more money to go back to that 2019 to present the town with more numbers of what needs to be done. Um, so maybe we can just reconvene. I know it's taken a lot of this time and I think it's bigger than just this meeting. And it's, and there's other people probably that are here trying to present things, um.
You are right, Carol, and I, I will, I will tell you this. I did go over that environmental partners, um, report from three years ago. The same cracks in the sidewalk, they are, the same issue that actually when that got, uh, when that was done, but before, uh, the last plan, it was a woman, um, took care of that environmental report. She got the approval from the highway department to open the structures. Now I think that was probably part of the cost or the time or the, whatever had to be done. Um, probably a person who well knew what happened with the highway department and creating those catch basins, um, back in 2011. Those were done incorrectly and this could have been the way, I'm not naming names and I, I know.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that, no. I, 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 there are other people who would like to speak and I, and I, and I-
But I am explaining this because of the, not so much the time, but the money that Carol mentioned is being floated around. There was help from the highway department. The roads do not, do not seem any worse than they did three years ago when, but when I bought, they were snow covered. But believe me, that spring hit and, and then I saw the roads. Um, but they are not that worse. I think what the town, what we're all thinking about as a neighborhood is to, we're going to live with the roads the way they are now. The urgency, I don't even know if there's urgency in the catch basins. All we're looking for is what they all deserved 25 years ago. And everybody just, I wouldn't hate to use the term, they passed the buck. And they kept overlooking. And we're now seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's no worse than it was three years ago.
And, and I, I feel like people are being insulted by, we're trying to talk about this in a, kind of a, a clinical way.
Yeah.
But I know you guys live there, so it probably feels like we're being judgmental, but we're just looking at this report.
I don't think you are.
And, and so, um, you know, this is not to say that that's not a lovely neighborhood and that you guys aren't appreciated by us and, you know, and all of that.
It's, we just want the fair shake. We want to know that we're living on a public road and not owning to the middle, nobody accounted for that. If you were told that in a dirt road that you- If you were told that on a dirt road, that you own to the middle, or that you want to buy in a dirt road, it's great. It's going to stay a dirt road. This isn't the case here. Not at all.
I am interested in the fact that you guys are saying that your deeds all say it's a public road. That, I think, bears a little bit further investigation, because that would mean something really jumped the tracks at the registry. And, you know, normally, I would say caveat emptor, right? Everybody has to do their due diligence before you buy a house. But if your deed is saying that it's a public way, and you guys, you know, if, in fact, that's accurate... I don't know. I haven't seen those. But there is a gentleman who had a... I'm sorry.
That's perfectly fine.
She answered one. John Alexander was 40 Stringer Lane. That document right there, that's a public document. We can see that document. We can come to town hall, make copies of it.
Absolutely, yeah. You can have my copy, if you want.
I didn't worry about that document. The other question I have for council is, so if I come into a town...
I'm sorry, through me to town council?
Okay. So if I come into town and I build a subdivision, it's going to be private? I have to assume it's going to be private until what happens? And if nothing happens, it'll be private forever?
Well, I can answer that, but I won't. Mr. Campbell, or I guess Mr. Winter, under what conditions, if I build a development, how would a road be made public?
So any private development, any subdivision, it's going to be a private way. And in fact, a lot of subdivision decisions will state if the road is being constructed in a way that's other than the town's standards, that it shall remain private, and the owners, developers shall not petition the town. So that's how it starts. How it becomes a public way is there's a statutory process under Chapter 82, where someone has to petition the Board of Selectmen, or a select board, depending on the town, or city council, if you're in a city, to lay out the way as a public way. Then gets referred to the planning board, which makes a nonbinding recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen, and it goes to town meeting for all those steps that I mentioned earlier tonight. That is not a mandatory process. That's a discretionary process. So town meeting, the select board, anybody along the way can make a negative vote on that.
So Litchfield, the community Litchfield, is that public or private? Do we know? It's a subdivision of 58.
Mr. Campbell, is Litchfield Lane public or private?
I would answer that. We are currently, right now, in the stands. Litchfield Lane was voted in in 2006 as a public way, and it was approved at town meeting. In 2005, it went to town meeting, and it was not approved because of the exact same situation. There were some improvements that needed to be made in regards to the way. Those improvements were made, and then it returned in 2006. A little bit of a caveat with Litchfield Lane. The town of Hanson still has some further paperwork to do with Richard Deuce to finalize that. But right now, Litchfield Lane, it went through the process 2005, moved to NIV, because of conditions. Developer went back, repaired the conditions 2006, and returned, and it was approved.
What about Dear Hill?
I mean...
Well, I think this is very important to our point. Dear Hill?
With all due respect, sir, I mean, are there several that you'd like to do? Because we are...
No, Dear Hill would be the next one.
Okay.
I guess I could look at...
Mr. Campbell, Dear Hill?
I would have to refer it to the list that we need some time to look at. There are many private ways, many private ways.
I guess recent developments that are private ways is, I think, what... Yeah.
Most recent developments that are private ways?
Are there many recent developments that are considered private ways?
Sure. Christopher Lane, Azalea Way, Sidney Lane. There's tons of them.
Okay. Okay. Did anybody on the board have any questions?
I just have one more.
Yes, Mr. Campbell.
Joe, it's Jim again, and sometimes my brain runs a few seconds behind my mouth. So I wanted to apologize to you if you thought I was being flipped in any way at the beginning, but...
No apology necessary.
Okay. You did get to my point, where somewhere along the line, something went wrong. Now...
Well, I can tell you with this particular property, it went wrong as soon as the developers stopped answering calls to the town meetings.
Okay. So, Joe, this is just me and you. Is there some way we can, like, meet in the middle and discuss it and maybe get some answers back for these people?
That's what we're trying to do tonight. That's what we're trying to do.
Right, absolutely. One of the best things from the planning office and from the planning board itself is to be able to have folks that live in... A majority of residents that live in the neighborhood, in the subdivision. So we'll say, we'll call it a whole subdivision, so we don't keep calling them streets. We need to have a majority of residents that live in the subdivision to end together. And that's all it would be. Nobody has to put any monies in. An HOA is nothing more than a social club to talk about, you know. But we can have constant communication with them in regards to what's going on. And, oh, you were asking, go ahead. It's not going to be serious. But that's definitely a start.
Mr. Campbell, you're not suggesting that they have to have an HOA. They could still have this loosely formed group of people.
For lack of a better term, calling it an HOA... I mean, HOA has a terrible connotation. I understand. I completely understand that. But for, you know, come together as some kind of a club, or, you know, get some organization. So they have one point of contact. I think that's one of the things that they want.
That's what we're trying to say.
Is one point of contact, so that you guys can get your thoughts formed, and they can... You can speak intelligently with these boards as one, not 15 or 20. And I'm not criticizing... I'm glad you all came tonight. I had no idea that this was coming up tonight. I'm really kind of surprised, especially, I would really love to see the deeds that say "public road", because that... I know the road you're talking about. That road is a... I mean, the neighborhood's lovely, and the roads are fine, as far as I could see.
And that's my point.
Not that costly.
Is that the next time we see this, let's say, the neighborhood gets together, and, Joe, they get together with you or a couple of people, the next time it comes in front of us, we're going to get a packet like this three days before the meeting. And that's our first chance we're going to look at it. As the select board, we've got to do better. So if, you know... And by me saying that, I'll volunteer. But to get together with you, or the neighborhood, and, you know, whatever research we have to do to find out, you know... Because somebody dropped the ball somewhere. But so now, who's going to pick it up? So, you know, that...
I don't... Personally, I think the connection that maybe some of the neighbors are trying to get to is that there was nothing on their deeds. I might be wrong. There's nothing on their deeds that say it's a private way. What it does claim is that the conservation has specifically said in their covenants that when the catch basins are complete, and that was the responsibility of the developer and/or the town, and when the roads are fixed, and the roads have been good for travel, then the town would accept them as public ways. That is in the conservation covenants, Section 27.
Okay, but so it doesn't say that they've been accepted.
It says, "When these specific things are done, the roads will be accepted." And the fact that in 2011, the judge said, "Give him back his bond, because both engineers said everything is suitable." He gave the bond back, and...
Suitable for the purposes of that litigation, to get his bond money back, but...
No, they had an agreement to fix the roads and the catch basins. And that is what happened, and that's how the judge dealt it. It had nothing to do with him, even with conservation. But in all fairness, if the roads are satisfactory and the catch basins are satisfactory, then the conservation and the town of Hanson would accept the roads. And that's what these people have been fighting about. They're looking for somebody to understand where it's all... It's unfortunate that there was a lawsuit. There was. If it had been done on good terms, nobody would, in this town, would be fighting the fact that you would have accepted them, because that's what the conservation rules say.
Madam Chair, I could...
Yes, Mr. Campbell. And then I'm going to give about five more minutes, and then we really have to wrap it up. We have quite a bit of business to do tonight, and we've given this well over an hour.
I'm very... Me, myself, personally, and just being an electrical man, I'm actually very glad that all of these are coming up. So thank you for everybody, for showing, for, you know, putting this forward. I would like to make a point, though, that the roads and the catch basins, to the last speaker's point, are still not satisfactory. That's the negative commentation here with this. The 2019 report from environmental partners will show that. It will show that. So as I was saying a little bit earlier on with the acceptance policy, the superintendent of roads, the utilities, the water, everybody has to accept it to a certain standard. And that's where...
But your engineers...
That's where litigation, that's where the courts litigation, they weren't going to get involved. As Granny earlier was saying, that riser on that catch basin is supposed to be six inches instead of three inches. They won't do that. So the court ruled satisfactory in regards to the partial completions to take it out of litigation, because they put a statement of litigation forever, to your point, to the last speaker, to the new head chair. If this was still going on, since that litigation ever happened, absolutely not. The town of Hanson Planning Board, from that time until this day still, would always help the developers speed to the fire to fix the deficiencies. And the developer chose to walk away.
Right, but if the lawsuit hadn't happened, where that money was returned, then there would have been some money to be used to address some of these deficiencies.
Absolutely.
Did you say you had some?
No, I just said that's why we would have had the money at the time.
Okay. Did anybody else... Mr. Tarvis?
For Tarvis, 101, he's Washington Street. Now, I've only had time to look up three deeds in here for just random plus that are on there. The languages that I have seen in all three of them, it's been pretty much the same thing. It doesn't say specifically, I don't know what the legal wording needs to be, of course, I'm not in that field, about whether it's private or public, but it does specifically say, like, quote, "The said parcel is conveyed together with the right to use the ways or roads shown on set plan as presently laid out, or as they may be laid out in the future for all purposes, for which ways or roads may be used in the town of Hanson." Those three I've looked at specifically didn't say anything about it being private, nor necessarily public, but that's just the wording that's in it, just for some context for anybody wondering.
Yeah, we would probably have our legal counsel take a look at one of them. Mr. Winter, suggestions on how to move forward with further analysis on this? Because obviously, nobody wants to have to spend money that they don't need to. You know, I think we've kind of unearthed most of the reason why we're where we are, which is, in a way, irrelevant, because, I mean, it's important to inform us, but it's not really going to help us moving forward. I'm just wondering, like, how do we move forward? Obviously, we don't have an endless supply of money, but I would like to try to figure out, is this bigger than a breadbox? Is it manageable? You know, what are our options for working with folks? And I think you've laid some of that out, but in your experience, what would be the next best step here?
So the first two steps I would suggest are, one, I think it was mentioned earlier, and I agree completely, that the residents need to speak with a more singular voice. So there needs to be a point of contact and some sort of organization. We have it just by virtue of being a municipal government. They need to have something so that they can communicate and make decisions on their end and liaison with us. I also heard from one of your members that there was some interest in having, quote-unquote, workshop meetings. And what would get that off the ground is for the first item of discussion to be how to update or get a new report on the conditions of the road and the infrastructure in the road. So first, you have to identify the scope of that service and get some quotes on how much that's going to cost. And then you at least have something to focus on. Who's going to pay for that? What is that? So I think that's the very first thing, because otherwise, you know, we're children at windows here. We don't know what we're fighting.
Okay. I like that. Thank you for distilling that to some basic elements. So for you guys, I'd like you to all think about how you will organize. We won't use the dreaded three-letter...
Don't use that.
But if you can get something vaguely resembling that, that allows us to have one point of contact. And then I think we'll talk as a board and see if one or two of us might be willing to do workshops and continue the conversations. And clearly, we're going to have to involve planning, because, you know, this is not something we deal with every day. This is not within our... You know, this is not our bench strength as a board. I'm speaking for myself. Maybe two members might have some bench strength there. And then we'll... In the workshop, I think we could talk about how do we look at funding a refresh of this report. And at least those are some three solid, tangible next steps that we can take. I know it doesn't completely address everything that you guys were hoping to address tonight, but I hope what you are hearing is that we are very willing to have this dialogue with you. We're very willing to listen to what your concerns are and try to partner with you on a path forward. We can't make any commitments. A lot of that's going to be up to town meeting, you know, and others, but we can definitely try to map out what the next steps are. So we have some kind of a plan, and you're not left sort of flailing on your own. I don't know if that seems okay to you guys, or, you know, if anybody had any last comments, or... Okay. All right. Well, we thank you guys for reaching out to us.
Thank you very much.
And so have your people call our people. Mostly, if you get in touch with Lisa, that's our people, and that would be great.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your time here.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to call a very brief recess, and we'll be back in about three minutes. Let's see what we've got that we might be able to alleviate some folks and let them leave after that conversation. We've got... We're going to be discussing generally special town meeting warrants, but we have with us Karen Stolfer from the library. And Karen, and we've also got Corinne Cofardo, who's the president of the... Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. And I'm wondering, did you want to let us know what you're hoping to have on the town meeting warrant?
Sure. Yeah. So we had, well, we had an article for HVAC replacement that was kept up with yesterday. So there's an article to replace the HVAC at the building. There's also one for our security cameras, which Steve, the IT director, was working with him. He had somebody come in this morning to give us a quote for... I guess it was an article for security cameras at town hall. We were hoping that we could just combine them, you know, have one system, same system for both buildings, and have one article for putting in cameras in both places. So I don't have some of the details of that, Steve, I believe, I was working on that.
Now, when do you think you might have those numbers? Because we are being rather stringent about sticking with our deadlines.
Yeah, so Steve did... The person that came out to give us a quote this morning, he said, you know, if you could make it a top priority, because, you know, we need the total of the deadlines today, so...
Okay, well, I mean, so we wanted the general concepts today and the absolute dollar amounts, and at the very least, full and robust language of the article and the explanation absolutely have to be in by next Tuesday.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I don't know if Steve Leese had sent... Who's going to send Leese something?
I haven't received anything yet, but I'll let him know.
Okay. So that's... And was there anything else, Cam?
Well, there was the meeting with wage and personnel about the custodian. I didn't know if that needed to be an article. That's why I did send Leese that one for a warning, just in case. But I wasn't sure if that was... Yeah, it's already by January 4th, but...
Yeah, so we did discuss that, Lisa. Is that on our wage and personnel for tonight?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we'll be discussing that tonight, yeah. And we kind of briefly talked about it at our last meeting, because I had that conversation with you, and I told everybody, "It's in your budget. It's, you know, don't panic. It's not... We're not really adding another position." You've got the money there, and that Jean has the money for the benefits, so we're, you know... I don't want to say cost neutral, but it's relatively cost neutral, as much as anything can be. Did anybody on the board have any questions for Ms. Stolfer or Ms. Cofardo? Ms. Cofardo, did you want to add any color commentary to that, or...
The system at the library was... Heating system was put in 30 years ago. Until the past 15 to 20 years, it's had a lot of patching up. past 15 to 20 years, it's had a lot of patching up. Um, it was never the proper system for the size building to start off with, so there's been a lot of, um, work have been done over the years, and we are very concerned about it, and we now, you know, offering as a heating and cooling place for when the town is without power. So, um, and we want to continue to do our part with the community, so, you know, we really need it replaced.
Now, um, I'm going to ask you a provocative question. Are we sizing it for the current building, or for the size that we want the library to be at some point in the future?
Well, right now, it's for the current building.
And we don't know, it's, it's so up in the air with, uh, we don't know, that could be a few years, it could be 10 years.
That's true. And in either event, the building will continue to be occupied.
It's still a town-owned building.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, I rather doubt the town's going to take it down. Maybe you would rent it, um, maybe that would become the new senior center.
Right.
There's a lot of options out there. So, um, you know, as we've said in many other, um, meetings, because I know when people hear dollar signs, they get worked up, and I can understand that, um, but it is a town-owned building, and it has to be, while we're in it, we have to maintain.
Yeah, that's absolutely agreed, and I think we collectively appreciate that we perhaps have not done a stellar job of maintaining all of the town buildings, but we're working on it. Uh, but of course, years of kicking the can down the road catches up with you, whether it's on your own personal house or public buildings. Ms. Green, um, would the HVAC system, um, be ARPA-eligible?
Um, I don't know about ARPA, but we, um, green communities has been, um, out there looking at the HVAC system at the library, um, and we are doing assessments on it, and we do plan on including that in the application for that.
So there's potentially grant money for that?
Yes.
Okay, but, um, so, in the event that we put that on the town meeting warrant, worst-case scenario, we think that we're paying half dollars, but we ultimately can perhaps get grant money to either reimburse or to, to pay for it outright?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That, well, that's a, that's a good, good case scenario. And I, I, I agree, um, with both of you ladies that, um, if we're going to have a heating and cooling center, we ought to make sure that the heat and the cooling work, so that we're not having people.
Sometimes it gets down to like safety, with like a really cold snap in the winter, and then like also the heat sometimes, and if there's really, with the hot weather we've had, just can't keep up with.
Yes. Okay, well, we, as always, appreciate your thoroughness, um, and your thoughtfulness about putting things together. Um, and, um, did anybody have any questions? Nope. All right, so we'll plan on including those. If you can just get us the language, that would be amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Um, okay, let's see, um, just, anybody that is here? Oh, Mr. Mr. Howard, um, we've got a vote to rename the drainage committee to the stormwater and drainage management committee. Didn't we already do that?
I thought we did.
We did already do that.
Well, the.
And when we did these appointments, we renamed that committee.
Well, the, the board had mentioned that the drainage committee needed to have a meeting to vote to change the name, and then it would come to the select board.
No, we, uh, well, I think we should go back and take a look at those minutes, because I think what we said was that we were voting on it contingent upon the committee also voting on it. So we already, in fact, voted on it. Yeah.
We changed the name.
Yeah, we changed, we changed the name. I remember having a vote. Do you guys, am I?
Yeah, we did.
All right, okay. I thought I was having like a moment here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay, so, um, we, we already actually did change the name, so.
Is it all done?
So, there you go. You're all set. Um, so we're all set with that. All right, thanks, John. Um, okay, and Mr. Clemmons, I see that you're here. Did you have any, um, town meeting warrant articles you wanted to discuss?
Well, our agent has submitted, I think, in writing, uh, to the proper point of communication, um, the three articles that we are proposing. And I just don't feel there was any good review of that. I don't think I could add to whatever he submitted, uh, but our, our commission did vote to approve this, this submission of those at a recent meeting, and I don't think I could add to it right now.
Do you happen to know what those, do you know what those are, Lisa?
They, yeah, so they are in the packet. Um, they are basically about four pages from the back. Um, they are, there's three articles that they submitted. Um, initially, I asked, um, Frank to send me those in order, uh, format, so that I could just merge them over.
Okay.
Um, I mean, they're basically looking for, um, $40,000 to replenish the conservation fund. Um, then they're looking at, um, asking for, um, different maps and lots, um, where the open space would be for fall into protection of Article 97, um, the Massachusetts Constitution. Uh, and then the article, the third article that they presented is asking for, um, $26,488, 80, which would be an increase for the 16 hours to bump the conservation agent up to $35,000, a whole-time position.
And is Todd recommending that?
Um, I have not gotten anything from Todd yet.
I actually, at the recommendation of Lisa, I sat with Todd to discuss the, the, um, the agent salary, and that's precisely what he recommended we do. He said he recommended we ask to raise it appropriately and to, uh, go with the straight amount hourly rate on a number of hours, and that's what we, that's what we put down.
And he felt that was affordable and sustainable?
Well, he, I don't believe he was joking when he recommended it. I mean, I think, seriously, I think, um, I just took it straight that that was a sensible thing to do. I certainly wouldn't know any better than that. Um, maybe just to comment on the other things very briefly, we're asking to replenish the conservation fund, because we've almost had to doubt nothing. In the last several years, we've done a lot of work to make the conservation areas more accessible to the public, um, better parking, better signage, kiosks, trail maintenance, and, uh, just general, uh, actual management of town property.
It has been noticed.
Or five.
No, it has been noticed. It has absolutely been noticed.
The thing is, we're not done. We find that there are other things that the public expects and needs. We don't want to have unsafe conditions when people try to park at a place that isn't room, or think they're parking in a located place when they ought not to.
Yeah.
We want, we want to have informative information to people. We also want to know where our property lines are. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. And where we don't is potential encroachment by neighboring activities, or, we don't want to approach into anyone else's area, if we don't make a trail and find out what's wrong. Uh, we need to, one property at a time, uh, survey and bound those lines. So we've been doing that. We also need to record information about properties that we are acquiring or have acquired in the past, such that the deed is properly recorded with the rest of the deeds, so that there's no question, uh, in mind of anyone that comes looking along either soon or far in the future about what is required. So we're just trying to responsibly manage our property, and we're, and we're running out of money.
No, I, I, it's, the signage has been amazing, the no, no ATVs, the keep your dogs leashed, the weed whacking, the, the, the Jersey barriers, it's all been noticed. It's amazing.
And I know in past discussions with our police department, uh, sometimes if you might want to invoke their assistance, they can only do it if they know what the rule is, and the rule needs to be available for people to see. So we've got references to town bylaws, in case someone doesn't believe, they say, well, you can look it up.
Yep.
Um, the, the final thing there is those parcels, uh, there's a half a dozen parcels. The Little Cedar Swamp is well-known on, to anyone who's ever looked at a map of the town of Hanson, since the first one was made 200 years ago. It's a, it's a great resource area, but we take it for granted, and no one goes there and understands it, and therefore no one manages it or watches to make sure it's not being abused. Uh, as we have begun in the past, long before now, uh, some parts that do belong to conservation, but originally, it was cut up into different parcels, because the old folks used to go in there, had cedar posts for fencing, and just, they used it a lot now. Now, what it does is it provides things like, it collects stormwater, like from the event we had yesterday. Uh, notice the town not flooding, because it has a swamp to go to, and things like that. Uh, also, the, um, is significant wildlife habitat there, and we've done a good job through the highway department's assistance of reconnecting the stream that flows from the Cedar Swamp out into, uh, the, you know, Looking to Head Brook and so on. Uh, we, however, we want to look ahead and say, we want to be able to, both policy-wise and property line department, be able to act on behalf of the town, the citizens, to responsibly manage it, know where the property lines are, uh, basically try to bridge and get to the point where it's, it's one unit of land, it's being properly managed for the services it provides and the resource that it is, and this is a, a step towards, we don't think we have anyone's interests.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
There was property for sale in there. What happened to that?
The town bought it.
Good, okay.
We've got extensive discussion here. It was a, about eight or nine acres of land that should never, ever, ever have had a house on it. It had a poor excuse for a house on it long ago, and the so-called cellar under it was always full of water. That's personal observations of previous town employees. And eventually, the house was torn down, and, but it continued to be on the market. This disturbed us.
Yeah.
So we contacted the owners and talked to them, and also realized, and said, you know, the town would like to have this, because it was classified as Chapter 61 land management. They were getting tax advantage, they pretended to spend nature study. So they're getting these tax advantages for marketing as a house lot. He said, this is not appropriate.
Which gives us the right of.
So we, we used it, we exercised that right. The owners cooperated, we, uh, obtained community preservation money. We did spend some money out of the conservation fund. That conservation fund also is seed money for grants or other projects. It isn't like we never spend our own money, we always want someone else's. Um, but yes, and we did.
Good to know.
We acquired it, it's ours now, and, uh, it won't have any more bulldozers on it like it did once.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Clemmons, and please, um, through you to the rest of your, um, Conservation Commission, um, our deepest appreciation for those little trailblazers, um, because they're doing an amazing job. Um, Mr. Campbell, we've got you on the phone, and you were, um, you were so nice as to join us earlier for.
I'm muted.
You're muted. Are, are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, great. Um, so you had some articles, um, was, did you want to hit the highlights for us?
Uh, for me, personally, from the board perspective, I don't know if the town planning is still present, uh, but one of the things that we propose actually is a, a visual representation of what we had tonight, to be able to fund, um, a request that we had put into Highway, to find out what it would cost to put up private waysides, uh, on previous, uh, developments in our previous, uh, roadways that went in. Uh, moving forward, if you've been by Progress Point of Brookside, uh, moving forward to alleviate some of this issue, that has a private way sign on it, because it was a request from the planning board for the development to put that on there. But we do have private roads that, that do not have private way annotations right there at the entry to the street, and it really, it really should, it should be there.
Okay, yeah, I, I, um, I, I definitely like the idea of that, because it seems to catch folks off guard, um, that they're on a private way, um, and I think that that would make it abundantly clear. So, um, and what's the cost for that, Joey? No, it's in here, I just, um.
It, it was under $10,000, but then, after, after purchasing the actual part of itself, we had an in-kind portion where there would be some labor involved from, uh, from our highway to, to go out and mount them. Uh, if they're, if they're allowed, again, private ways are private ways, they're run by private landlords, they may not have permission. Somebody might come home and say, don't, don't put that on my property. But, uh, I think that the vast majority, when we did a little bit of outreach, were okay with having a private way on their side. So I even had anybody, except for one property that I know that said, we don't want any more signage on our street. So, uh, aside from that, it's a little bit of in-kind, uh, labor from our own highway department to go out and, and, uh, and, and assault these if they were purchased.
Okay. Um, anything else?
Uh, thank you very much for the lengthy discussion earlier on. It was very nice. Uh, to select man hitting point about us doing better, um, and to the board, unfortunately, this was, uh, something that, that, that was in immensely hit by COVID. Uh, the planning board itself, I was heavily involved with Council as well to revamp the new private way, a new private way acceptance policy. So, um, we, we were, we were doing, um, you know, the yeoman's work to be able to get to that point where this is something we could have put forward. COVID hit, and it just went right to the back burner, obviously understandable because of the pandemic, but, um, it, it, it's, there's, there is, uh, a track policy that's out there. So, but I wanted to say thank you to all the select board, and to, uh, town administrator, and to all the folks that came out from, from, from the private property to, to discuss this. It's, it's definitely something that needs to be, I think we're just at the tip of the iceberg.
Yep, and I, I certainly appreciate your involvement, as well as Mr. DeFrayis. Please, um, convey our appreciation for him making himself available this evening, and, um, as well as yourself. Um, it's clearly the first of many conversations we'll be having.
Yes.
About Alden Way, where we'll all be intimately familiar with their retention basins and all detention and stormwater and curbing and, and all of that type of stuff that I find so extremely invigorating.
It's nice to see land use is running in some of that.
Oh, yes. Who, who isn't, who isn't a fan of land use? Um, okay, so that's, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
It's the regulation board, it's a.
Oh, yeah, that's a ringing.
Good night, everybody. I appreciate your time, Debbie.
All right, take care.
Take care.
Um, we've got Chief Metz here, um, so I thought, he's got a couple items that we might be able to kind of clip away at.
He's got that.
Um, and so Chief, I know, um, we're going to be talking to you at our next meeting about, um, vehicles and appointing an officer, but, um, we did not have that on for tonight. Um, so, for tonight, I thought we would talk to you about, um, your warrant articles, and, um, also, um, I don't know if there was anything that you needed to tell us about the freaky 5K road race. I'm sure they've checked in with you, because they've done this a few times before, so, um, okay.
I, I just have one article. I want to make sure that it got, got in, if anybody had any questions, because on, on the surface, if you don't understand it, it might look scary, because it's creating new positions. But the new positions are, are going to be part of a civilian traffic control, uh, unit. So the person will be a civilian traffic control agent. Basically, I'm starting the town's flagman, um, company. So, what's the benefit to the town? One, I can get more personnel to actually take some of the road jobs, the construction-type jobs. Uh, two, it, uh, we charge an administrative fee on all private details, which goes back to the town. Uh, so the town would continue to get that 10%. I'm having issues where I, I can't keep telling private companies you can't work, because I can't get the people. Uh, there's a shortage of police officers, um, across the state, and with police reform, they did away with all the part-time police academies. We don't have a pool of part-time officers to pull from anymore. So, um, this will allow me to, one, bring back one, uh, officer we lost because of police reform, who worked for the town since, I think, 1982.
Officer Clark?
Yes. It would allow me to bring him back, because they will be, um, they will, they still go through training every year, they know how to, uh, control traffic safely, they will have the proper, uh, uniforms on. Uh, the big difference is they're not armed, but they still have to do CPR every year, first responder. Um, so they'll have to do that on their own. I mean, I'll provide the opportunity for them to do it, but it, it'll be their expense.
And the union is not concerned about this?
The uni, so the union, uh, I already spoke to them, there's no concern, because the only time it will get to a civilian traffic control agent is after it's gone through the union contract. So the full-time officers have had an opportunity at it, the part-time officers have had an opportunity at it, and then we'll go to them. Um, I'm also a little concerned, because a couple of the part-timers are, um, getting up there in that age limit, where, uh, insurance companies and stuff don't want to cover them anymore, which I haven't gone down that road with anybody yet. Um, so it would allow me to, to allow those people to keep working. And then another part of the policy in this, which I provided the board the policy, I wouldn't expect that to go to town meeting, but obviously, anybody wants to read it, they can. Um, it's just a lot of reading for a town meeting article. But they're, they'll be required to make sure that they're physically fit, by, you know, going to the doctor at least once a year on their own, providing a medical to us, um, which is actually more than I do with a full-time police officer at the time, at the moment. So, that's, was my first thing, to make sure that got on, and see if anybody had any questions to let me know.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Good idea.
All right, the next thing was to make sure, and this is kind of on order, I, I didn't know if you were doing wage and personnel later tonight.
We are. We're actually supposed to be doing.
Mr. Weeks is the.
Yeah.
You're the chair, right?
Yes, sir.
So I didn't want anybody to, like, cringe when they saw that I, I put in for a number of different ones. Um, but more importantly, the police ones look scary to people, because there's a top of $90 an hour. You have to understand something, that's like an emergency detail on a weekend. But I, I have to have the rates in there. It's in the contract, so I can pay, um, the officers I can pay, because I have a mechanism to do that. The, but part-time special officers, um, student police officer, and, uh, the civilian traffic control agents would be paid the same. and the civilian traffic control agents would be paid the same rates as a police officer or a part-time police officer. So, and that's, again, that ninety is not taxpayer money. That's private, private entity money. And then.
Chief Mick, I'm sorry. I, I, so we, we haven't started that wage and personnel meeting yet? So we really can't even deliberate about that?
I didn't want you to deliberate. I just didn't want anybody to be scared when they saw it. So I'm done with that.
Okay. All right, and you're going to be back next week. Might we expect a visit from Lucy?
I was thinking maybe.
Our minds want to know.
Next week when I'm not going to be here.
I, I was thinking it might be, well, if all goes well with the new officer and we have to swear in one officer, we might as well swear in two. So maybe we can bring her in then.
Swearing in Lucy?
Oh, yeah, I'm getting her. I gotta get her a badge. We licensed her. Did you know what her license number is? Nine one one. So. Beth was kind enough to pull that out of the stack for us. So. Yeah, she's a big hit. And then, did you need to, do you need me for anything on the assigning police details at the polls? I know that's on the agenda too.
We did have Mr. Hill, I believe. I gave you that, that.
The motion for the poll.
Yeah.
Should I read that now?
Yes, please.
I'd like to move that the select board vote per the recently passed Votes Act, section seventy-two of chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two to assign a sufficient number of police officers at the polling location on September sixth, twenty twenty-two to preserve and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections. And further, to vote to designate the police chief and his designees as the appointing authority of police details for all future elections, assigning specific police officers according to scheduling and availability.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I think it's self-explanatory, but.
It's just going back to the way it's always been. Yes.
All in favor? Okay, great. Okay, well, we're, we're good to go then.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night.
And we look forward to seeing you and, and maybe Lucy next week. Okay, and discuss, oh, oh, I'm sorry. So let's circle back. And we're clearly not going to make our eight o'clock wage and personnel timeline. Chairman Weeks, so vice chair slash chairman. Mr. Melissa.
Awesome. So, thank you. I'll try to make this brief because I have, I, I gave you guys a packet of eight different articles that are here. So I'll just go through them pretty, pretty quickly with the exception of one that I kind of want to boast on. But I'll take that, I'll take that short too. So as you can see, the first page says capital improvement articles. Our capital improvement committee is looking to have four articles placed in the special town meeting warrant. The first one would be to amend section two, I'm sorry, article two, section eleven. Article two dash eleven, section one of the capital improvement committee general bylaws by changing the committee size from seven members at large to five members at large with two non-voting alternates. This would provide us the ability to have a quorum in an easier situation. I know we had a situation a couple of months ago where we could not do capital improvement and kind of put us in time crunch. This would let it, so, you know, we still are a seven-member committee, but two of those people would actually be a non-voting alternate. And our quorum number at that point would be three instead of the four that it is right now.
And everybody was good with that on the committee?
Correct, yeah. We, we voted unanimously for that one. So is there any questions about article one? No? Okay, cool. Article two is actually going to vote to amend article two slash eleven, section two, which would limit, would change the limit of useful life for a capital improvement item or a capital item from ten years to five years. A little bit of a caveat with this article. If you check on the website for the town meeting bylaws, it still names the five years in there. But from our recollection or, or the recollection that we have from all of our paperwork, it actually changed to ten years, sometimes between the website bylaws being updated and then now. So we would just like it to be back to five years instead of ten years that it is right now. So making the, the cap a thirty-five thousand dollar purchase that has a useful life of five years would be something that you have to come and get approval by capital improvements. Any questions with that?
No, well, I do actually have one question. When did we come up with the thirty-five thousand?
So the thirty-five thousand number was in, in, I mean, Joe could probably speak a little bit better than this, but the thirty-five thousand number, it was in place from before. I've, I've looked at, I've done a lot of research in different towns. Some towns have twenty, some towns have twenty-five. Last night we discussed bringing that number down. But with recent inflation and things like that, we feel like if we had a twenty thousand dollar price cap, it would just be too much. Our matrix would be unmanageable. We'd have a lot of different items on there, especially bringing it down to a five-year cap. That might be something in the future that we want to do. But we figured that lowering the term down to five years instead of lowering the price down to five years would probably be more manageable.
Yeah, I like the five years. I was thinking, you're right with the inflation, but I, I was just thinking, I'd like to have some governance over, you know, what, what we think is important enough that it's a capital improvement. But I get the need to balance that with, you know, it could get crazy if you get.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we are, we are, with the exception of two members, a brand-new committee. So we're still getting our bearings there and everything that we have to do. So in the future, we might bring additional time, town meeting articles to change these bylaws. But as of right now, this is the only one that we're proposing when it comes to the limit. Yes.
Yeah, I just want, I, I wanted you to highlight, if you could, for a second, the reason why we're, we're proposing to bring it down to five years for transparency reasons.
Yes.
And this is the first step towards the people, actually. But I'll let you.
Yes, yes. So a, a big, a big part of this new committee and everybody on the committee is in absolute agreement is transparency and what we spend our capital items on. Ten years is a long time. It's a long time for, and not all items that cost over thirty-five thousand dollars will be, have a ten-year lifespan. Bringing that down to five years will give us the opportunity for all the citizens when we present our matrix at the town meeting to say, these are all the items that are going to be five years worth of use that are thirty-five thousand dollars. So they have a better picture of what exactly we're spending our capital money on. And that goes into, you know, a couple, that was, that was a big reason why we proposed this article yesterday at, at the committee.
Yeah, the ten years gets almost meaningless at some.
Yeah, it's some random number. It's like some, you know, ten years is a long time for something to last, so.
I mean, Ed brought up a good point yesterday that it doesn't bring into consideration things like tech issues that where you're going to get a roof for ten years at least, but you might not get tech for ten years. And how do you capture technology that's evolving so fast that it's not going to hit that ten-year threshold? And people want to know where their money's being spent. So I think it makes.
And you have just, you just kind of, when you just said Ed, I went, we have a quorum of capital improvement members here.
No, Kurt is an honorary. He's a.
Oh, you're honorary. Okay, all right.
Select board member.
Oh, no, no, capital improvement. We do have, but we're, but do we need a, do we need a, do we need an agenda for that?
No, we don't.
No, what I'm saying is just be, be cautious of posting it as a, as a, even if you're not going to have everybody, if you have a quorum at our meeting.
Yes.
Because these guys, by, even though they're in the capacity of selectmen, if they start deliberating, it could be seen as an open meeting law violation because you've got two boards here.
Well, we actually have the, basically the entire board's here. Because Pat's here, Ed's here, myself, Kurt.
Yep, yeah. So, so I will, so, so I will only address, I will only address the, the chairwoman. And then I will, at any future meetings.
They just can't be bought.
So every, yeah, every.
Just to dispel, deliberation means no decisions can be made.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, and just, just for future reference, Kurt, Kurt will come to all of the board's selecting meetings I'm supposed to be at. So just, just, just for his, because he's here anyway. So any questions about the second article that's here? No? Okay, great. So we'll move on to the third and the fourth article. Those are just placeholders for our matrix and then our priority list that we have there. Matrix is obviously not listed here. It's, it's a pretty big document. That'll be printed out on, on the article, but we, we also need to have that. Okay, and the second page is, sorry, the third page is our recreation committee articles. And the first one, I'm going to, I'm going to take a second. I know it's been a long meeting, but back in April, we presented a budget with, me and Audrey were presenting a budget for the recreation committee budget, right? And I'm, I'm super stoked that all the work that we did, the recreation committee, we actually have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over our budget that we had before.
Amazing work.
So, so we are, we are actually bringing in eighty thousand dollars of retained earnings that we've earned just in the last couple of months. We're not going to have to ask the town for any money come, come October like we were expecting. It would.
Well, I just.
Yeah, so, I mean. And, and, and just, just, just because I'm, I'm not the only one who did it. You know, Sheila Morse, Caroline Mills, Melissa Scartesi, Audrey Flanagan, myself, Dory, we all worked this, this budget like crazy, right? And we are, we, I'm super stoked that we don't have to ask the town for money. And if everything goes to plan, no made money will have to be asked and we'll be self-sufficient up there like, like, like we requested. So knock on wood, obviously. But, but this is, this article, article five is just to move some of our retained earnings around. We have insurance coverage that we need to pay for that we weren't expecting. That's forty thousand dollars of insurance coverage. Also, we're getting twenty thousand dollars additional retained earnings for a security system up there at, at the camp to bring in our security up to the town. We're also going to be asking for retained earnings of twelve thousand dollars for landscaping in front of the lodge, to redo the front of the lodge, add some gravel stone around the flagpost, add some more birch trees and things like that. Also, a nice granite post that says Camp Kwani in the front of it. And then the, the, we're just going to add ninety-seven hundred to the salary line so we can start preparing for the summer season. And now that we, the caretakers can have a little bit more hours since we're not in the, the deficit that we were in last year. So is there any questions about article five?
Amazing.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hickey.
With your retained earnings that you want to move around and the eighty thousand, that's great. I applaud you. Is the Cove going to be open next year?
I, I, that is, my priority this year was the budget to make sure that we're in, in line with the budget. Not us and town. My priority, my absolute top priority for next year is the Cove.
You mean staffed.
And my, and, and when I say Cove, I mean all-inclusive of the Cove. I mean the Cove, I mean the staff. I mean, we, we have an article in here for wage and personnel that's planning for next year's meeting because we have to hire people in January. So we're forward-thinking about the, the rates that we're going to have to approve in January to look for lifeguards and things like that. I, I, yes, yes. That, that's, that's my main goal. So.
Yeah, I think none of us really want to sustain the current model. We know why it's been necessary down there, but I think.
Yeah, no, with, 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 with the, the way that the recreation committee is working, we are looking to redo the Cove. We're looking to get CPC funds for redoing the Cove. We're looking to staff the Cove at least the way that it was before. Where was a certain portion of the day was staffed with lifeguards and a training, you know, and a beach director and things like that, collecting some gate fees, making that all. We're, we're, that's, we're starting on that now for, for next year. So.
Amazing. Any other questions of Mr. Melissa?
Okay, and then, so we got, I got three more. So capital, I'm sorry, article six is to see if, and I'm not a hundred percent sure if this actually needs to be a town meeting article, but the recreation committee was made in a town meeting, I believe, back in two thousand five, if I'm not mistaken. We're looking to change the name of the recreation committee to the Camp Kwani Commission or Committee.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at what the genesis of what that was. We'll have Town Council take a look at it.
Yeah.
And it may be a simple, it may be as simple as us voting it, but where it was created by town meeting, it likely has to go back to town meeting. I don't think anybody's going to arm wrestle you over.
I, I hope not. I mean, you know, we, we're still going to be doing the same programs of recreation down there at, at the camp. It's just that we're not, we're not a recreation committee. We're, we established there to maintain Camp Kwani. That's, that's what we're doing.
I think that that's good. It will eliminate a lot of that weird ambiguity that tends to exist.
Yep, and, and on, on that, if you guys do decide to take that for a board of selectmen vote, if that's required from board of selectmen, I have an updated policies procedures that the recreation committee has already approved without those changes in there for our policies and procedures. So I can hand that to you guys and you guys can approve that after the name change. So it's all synchronous and, and where, where it should be. Okay, article seven is the wage and personnel. I don't know if you want me to get into that now or if you want me to wait.
No, we'll get into that when we get in quick.
Article eight is a non-commission related and I, I, I don't know if I'm supposed to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway since I'm here. I would like to amend article one, section one of the general bylaws to start the town meeting and the special town meeting at six thirty PM instead of seven thirty PM. The reason for this is, I know there is a lot of senior citizens in this town that do not feel comfortable driving at night. Six thirty start time, the normal May town meeting, it gets dark usually around nine thirty, ten, nine thirty-ish is when the sun's kind of all the way out. Our last town meeting in May went to, I believe, eleven, if I'm not mistaken. So that, that is pretty late. And then on top of that, you know, there's a lot of younger people here who have a bunch of kids that don't have, you know, babysitters that they need to get their kids home. It'd be nice if everything was kind of moved forward. I think a lot of the important issues from town meeting are usually the ones that got brought up by citizens and those usually go to the back of the article. They're never usually upfront unless somebody moves it to be first. So, you know, that, I, I, I would propose that as, as an article as well.
I just interject. My only thought on that is working people that are coming down out of Boston at six thirty timeframe, they're the, that's going to be a tough one for them to hit.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think.
Please, everybody knows that.
Yeah, I don't think, I honestly, I don't think there's a good way to do it. That's kind of why, you know, that's thankfully why I would go to town meeting and kind of everybody would have an ability to vote on that. There's really no good way of doing it. I was thinking about, you know, maybe Sundays, maybe Saturdays, something like. But nobody wants to do that either, right?
You know what? We've got to move the needle on engagement and attendance at town meeting. So this seems like a very modest change and it may.
It's literally just pushing it up an hour. And, and honestly, if, if I were to be frank about it, you know, a good portion of the first hour of town meeting is pretty boring anyway. Like the town moderator is going there and be like, you know, one A of the budget, one B of the budget, you know. And, and, you know, not all the people really engage in that more than they engage in the articles that are in the back half of the warrant. So.
So my, my, my only question to this would be exactly what you just alluded to, which is the town moderator. I'd like to see, did you talk to him?
I have not shocked, talked to Sean yet. I, I can certainly do that.
I know it's in the bylaws, but it's always, it's, it's really his jurisdiction.
Yeah, I can absolutely talk to him about that. Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, I, I didn't even think about that until you just said that. So if he, if he's listening right now, wherever he may be, I did, I do not mean to do that. So I, I will talk to him about it as well. So.
Yeah, it's not his jurisdiction necessarily, but it would clearly impact him.
Yes.
And it would impact Beth.
Yep.
So you may want to just, you know, just make sure you've got the stakeholders, you know.
Yeah, those are the two people I don't want to make angry. So I, I'll, I'll check with them as well for it. But is there any questions on anything? No? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And does anybody else have any articles? You know, I want you to have that Bonny House article.
Yeah, we need to hear back from contractors first.
Okay, all right, great. Now we are clipping right along. Discuss and vote to approve the application from Paul Clark to hold Damian's freaky five K road race. I will entertain a motion on October thirtieth.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Discuss proposed gift of land owned by Eversource located on Whitman Street. I think there was a request in here from Frank Skellinger. Somewhere buried in this never-ending packet here. It says, Lisa, Eversource has proposed to give the town a large part, part of their parcel on Whitman Street. Because this land is all wetland and part of Little Cedar Swamp, Conservation would very much like to accept this gift as the parcel of its conservation land. Will you put it before the BOS and also let us know the procedure for accepting a gift of land? Well, the procedure is to put it on the town meeting warrant. Well, first for us to agree that we want to accept it and then it has to go before the town.
Yes, and then I would reach out to Town Council for language. You know, any particular language or specific language that needs to accompany this on the warrant. I also wanted to provide the board this information on any loss of revenue. I reached out to Lee to just ask her if there would be any loss of revenue on this land. And you'll see the information is there. Right now, the land is valued at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred. Once each receiver gets a gift, that, that value drops to one eighty-nine, one hundred. So basically, it's a seventy thousand, seven hundred dollar loss in value, which means it, it's going to be about one thousand six dollars loss in tax revenue once the town were to accept this, once, if the town were to accept this gift from Eversource.
But just to be clear, this isn't really what's considered a build-able lot. So.
Well, exactly.
So we're losing revenue from Eversource on an annual basis, but.
But I do want at least five of the board that.
Well, it's good information.
Or repaying them for a gift, a thousand dollars a year.
That would be another way.
Yeah, it's a thousand dollars a year.
Did anybody have any questions or concerns?
Appreciate you going the extra mile.
Can you come from there?
We're going to lose a thousand dollars a year.
It's tax, it's taxes. We lose a thousand dollars a year.
And then we'll be gaining, how many acres is it?
What will we be gaining?
Well, it's, I'm trying to figure out how many acres it is.
It's a large parcel. It's a, it's a good little chunk. Yeah, it is. It's a big piece.
It says seven point seven acres will be conveyed deed to Town of Hans and approximately seven point seven acres.
This all goes with the stuff that Mr. Clemens was talking about too. It's all the same parcel.
Little Cedar Swamp.
Little Cedar Swamp.
So we gaining property that you can't build on and it's no use to anyone, including Eversource, and that's why they wanna gift it to us and it's gonna cost us a thousand dollars.
It's not costing us. It's, we're simply not...
We lose a thousand dollars.
But, but we also gain and, and Mr. Clemens is talking about, you know...
Yeah.
It abuts all their conservation land.
And it developed as conservation land.
Other non-buildable land.
Well, you can't build on it, can't build on it. Nobody can build on it. Nobody can build on it, which I kinda like.
There is a concept of open space.
Yes. It's a valuable...
Do we need more open space?
Yes, we do. We need to maintain our open space.
This can't be built on, so it's going to ma, it's gonna remain open.
It's gonna stay open.
Whether we take it or not.
I'll make a motion, but I don't know how to word it, so...
Um, I make a motion that we, uh, this, this, did he put this on as the town meeting warrant article?
I think he's asking us if he needs to.
She does, she does, she comes with language.
Okay, well, we definitely need to. So I think probably the motion that you may want to make would be, we accept the concept of accepting this land, but need to put it on the town meeting warrant.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, did you abstain?
No.
You said no?
No.
Okay, all right. Did you get that, Lisa? Okay, um, and the discuss and vote to authorize filling an immediate temporary administrative assistant in the town administrator's office for four weeks. Ms. Green?
Uh, yes, um, Madam Chair, so I, um, had approached the town accountant on what, um, procedures would be required for the board. Uh, based on what's going on right now with me and my medical issue, um, I'm very limited in my mobility around the office. Um, and getting up, making copies, scanning documents, getting up and getting printed documents, it, it's just not something that I can do all day long right now. So I did approach the town accountant, asked him what formalities would be required, uh, for the board to bring in an immediate help, um, for maybe possibly the next four weeks. And he, um, suggested and, and noted that the board would need to authorize filling an immediate temporary administrative assistant position in the town administrator's office.
Would this be staff from a, a temp office or how, how would this?
Well, I did reach out to Social Ministers Group and no one has ever used a, um, temp agency. So my thought is I would reach out to Bridgewater State to see if there are any college students...
That's right, yeah.
Um, who would be interested in just a full week, fifteen hour a week.
I had thought of temp agency too, when we were in town.
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah.
No municipalities have, have used a temporary, a temp agency, so my thought would be Bridgewater State, uh, to, just to get someone in here. Um, because I really don't know what, um, I'm facing right now, um, with my medical issue.
Um, okay, so I will entertain a motion to vote to authorize filling an immediate temporary administrative assistant for up, up to four weeks.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great. And we've already, um, several times renamed the Drainage Committee to the Stormwater and Drainage. Um, I will entertain a mo, uh, motion to ratify and sign the Hanson Police Contract.
So moved.
And Ms. Green, where is?
I have it.
So, yeah, there, there are two copies of the contract that are circulating around somewhere. Um, and if, if I can note, this is the last of all of our union contracts to be ratified, signed, completed. And I will get that up on the website, um, of which, uh, any resident can go to the town administrator page and will find all union and, um, employee contracts on that, on that website. This is, I think, the first time that this has ever been done.
Excellent. Great. Um, so did somebody make a motion on that?
I did.
And did anybody second it?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor? Okay, great. Um, committee updates. Did anybody have anything burning that they could not wait until next week to tell us about? Okay, um, I know that was somewhat of a leading question, but, um, okay, and one day liquor licenses. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve them as printed in our agenda.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And Ms. Green, Town Administrator's report.
Um, hey, yes, um, I want to, I want to leave the board. Um, so this week, um, faced some challenges. I was able, we had talked a little bit about, ago about a, um, Mass grant for waysite cleanup, um, to, for technical assistance. This is pertaining to the firework site. So together with myself, Town Planner Tony DeFrays and Chris Costa, um, we completed the application and I submitted it, um, to the, um, a, the Massachusetts Agency who is administering the grant. So they did, um, acknowledge receipt of the application. Unfortunately, we have to wait till October fifteenth until the application close date. Um, then they will review all the applications and let us know by January thirty-first.
And this is to get us some much-needed third-party assistance on the, uh, factory pond, um, situation.
Yes, we had requested twenty thousand dollars for the technical assistance to bring on a consultant that would help us with the environmental impacts and provide us with guidance and, and information, um, on the cleanup that Tetra Tech had proposed.
Cause as you will recall, when Tetra Tech, um, when we had, you know, when we had that conversation, um, there were a lot of pitfalls for the unwary and, um, we really were a bit outgunned on that. So I think this will help us and I'm really hoping that we get it, Lisa. Thank you for applying for that.
And also too, just, um, we had received a letter, uh, from Mass DOT regarding two sections of our roadways. One is gonna be State Route Twenty-Seven from mile marker seven point four to mile marker ten, um, and State Road Fourteen from mile marker four point seven to mile marker five point six. The Mass D O P is granting Town Hanson money, um, to, uh, fix those roads in those areas and repave the roads. Um, so Jameson is, um, going to be filling out the paperwork for this, um, for this money that the town, the D O P has awarded to Town Hanson. Um, so that's absolutely, it's, it's a large amount, um, on both of those roads that you really, it, it puts us ahead of the game as far as road repairs and repaving, um, with this extra money. This is outside of Chapter Ninety money and outside of the winter recovery money. So this is additionally the state has granted us, uh, which is great. Um, also, um, I would like to announce that, that we have, um, hired an administrative, uh, executive assistant. Lynn Dial McDowell from Plymouth will be joining the, uh, the office on September seventh. Um, we are very excited to welcome her aboard. She comes with, um, excellent credentials and experience and, um, I think she's gonna be an excellent addition to our, our office.
Right. And that's all I have to report. Uh, Ms. Green, I did have a question. Have we heard back from Impressed LLC? Um, the last we spoke with them, um, in order to have a, they were quite urgent about the fact that they needed to expand their service model. And, um, we, um, gave them the to-do, um, to come back to us with the rules of engagement that Mr. Weeks had asked about. Um, and to, um, work with us on, um, what the next steps were. And as far as I know, I don't believe we've heard anything back from them.
We have not. I did, I did, uh, reach out to them and send them kind of a reminder regarding the, um, articles for the October special town meeting and I have not heard back from them.
Um, uh, and, you know, if I could impose upon you, um, today was the deadline, um, for us to have that in. We, of course, can have a placeholder, but if we don't have back from them for next, uh, at the, you know, by the next meeting, um, I think you need to let them know that this will have to wait until May town meeting.
I will do that, yes.
Do you guys agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and, um, and to go into wage and personnel, which we are twenty-five minutes late for.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, great, thanks.
All right, we'll jump right into it. Oh, our, our Capital Improvement Committee meeting is, we have a quorum now, typical. Yeah, exactly. Um, I'm gonna call the, uh, Wage and Personnel Board Meeting to Order at eight-twenty-four. Tuesday, August twenty-third at, oh, it's supposed to be eight, uh, Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Open Session. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will jump right into it. So we have discussion of library requests for a full-time custodian. Floor is yours.
So, um, we currently have, the library has a nineteen-hour custodian and the senior center has sixteen-hour custodian. So the hours go out to the thirty-five, but it's being split between two people. Um, there are no benefits. Um, and just having a two-part-time position really makes it difficult. You know, this, obviously you have shared buildings, so there's some share in cleaning and maintenance things and trying to coordinate that. You know, Mary and I do have best to communicate, but, um, it just makes it difficult having two different people. Um, also, um, it's resulted in work schedules that don't match up with our needs. So our custodian, um, because there's no benefits and, you know, only part-time, he actually has a, a, a regular, you know, full-time job during the day, so he's only able to come in at night. Um, and the senior center custodian with only sixteen hours, he's there in the morning just for a few hours each day. So, you know, the, the shifts are really short, um, it's hard to get things done in the short time periods. Um, and, you know, especially for snow removal, so our, with our custodian being there at night, we have nobody, like, the snow during the middle of the day, we, nobody, you know, staff have to go out and shovel and throw snowmelt. Um, you know, staff have done, you know, just earlier today, I was, we have an issue with some water coming in on the carpet. I was out, you know, trying to shovel some of the water away because there's no custodian available, um, during the day. We're open four to four hours, uh, in the week and we only have a custodian there, um, at thirty-five, it looks, or forty-four hours, we don't have a custodian. The senior center, um, they're open thirty-five hours, they don't have a custodian thirty-one and a half hours, they're open hours.
Okay.
So, you know, we're, and obviously we have, you know, we're serving children, seniors, um, we have like food and, and events we set up and, you know, staff have to usually do all that, have, have and everything. Um, so, you know, and landscaping, so we don't have, the, they don't have time to landscape, so we usually spend about like three thousand dollars a year on landscaping and that could, it comes out of state aid funds, which we typically use for programming. So we could, with that, we could find like another eight to ten programs a year, but we're spending it on landscaping, so we don't have anybody to do that for, so...
Okay. Um, I'm gonna tee this question up for all of, all these requests, but have you spoken to Todd? We can manage all of these?
Um, I, I have not.
No.
I have not. Todd is only here one day a week, so I, I didn't have an opportunity to speak with him, but I have been forwarding him all of these requests.
Karen, I do, did you, did you?
I'm sorry?
You spoke with Todd, didn't you?
Yes.
You give me a...
Yeah, well, it's already, it's already budgeted for, so I already put it in our FY twenty-three budget, um, assuming thirty-five hours at our custodian's, um, you know, salary. So, um, cause Mary has spoken with their custodian, um, and, you know, he's an older gentleman, so he's, you know, she's already taken care of that in terms of him vacating the position. Um, so, you know, our custodian, he's not sure if, because like he has the other full-time position, so he's not sure if he would wanna do full-time. So I don't know how that would work though, if, would we post it and, you know, hire somebody new, um, you know, how that would work in terms of making, you know, being one position now, so...
Any questions from the board?
Uh, if you were to do that, would you be able to get that new person at twenty-three, twenty-three an hour?
Well, so the range, yeah, the range in the bylaws is eighteen to twenty-four.
Okay.
And our custodian's been there for a while, so he...
So he's, okay, all right, good.
Higher level, so...
Um, I, I don't have any specific questions about this, but I do have a comment or just something like I'd like us to kind of put in the parking lot to think about at some point in the future. Is this an opportunity for us to have Charlie Baker work with this person and start to form more of a, um, maintenance department kind of thing? Um, which I think we've all recognized, we needed sort of a facilities manager slash maintenance. I just put that out there in the ether for us to think about at some point in the future.
Yeah, that's all. So Mary spoke to, um, the custodian at the senior center already.
Yes.
And you've spoke to your person?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I wanted to, to make sure I heard you correctly.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, obviously, do we have a, uh, I know Whitman has a program where seniors can work at a particular place and earn, uh, a refund on their taxes?
Yes.
Do we have that?
Yes, we do, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some people actually that do.
And we have folks who have helped out in Town Hall and, and that type of thing. Of course, you've gotta, you know, get very like prescriptive things for folks to do.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was just asking, because I, I know, I know the, the custodian at the senior center, so I, you know, but that, that's, that's...
All right. Also, Joe, uh, is Charlie Baker's, uh, position union? Is it a union position?
It is a union position.
Okay, so this would be a union position.
Our custodians are not union.
I'm sorry?
Our custodians are not union.
They're not? Okay.
Interesting.
You wouldn't be able to do a whole facilities thing if...
Not right now.
Yeah.
That's why I said put it in the parking lot, because there'll be more stuff.
Some are, some are...
Yep.
Yeah, because that would create a problem, like...
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would definitely advocate for that, because I, I end up doing a lot of stuff that, you know, takes me away from library services, because I'm having to do, you know, building things.
Well, and I'm just looking, I know you, I don't wanna, but, I mean, you're looking at a facility, you know, that, at some point, it seems to me like scales of economy. We've gotta get people talking to one another and if we've got all kinds of different people doing maintenance, facilities and cleaning, like, how, how do we, that's, you know, a structural... And maybe we can talk about that in our strategic planning session.
I totally agree.
I don't think the Camp Kwaney Facilities Manager would necessarily be able to fall into that, since it is a different fund, it's not a, I think the Enterprise Fund would kinda make it so he couldn't be a part of that, per se, but, uh, yeah.
So do we have to take any formal motion or anything on this? Or just, this is just an article?
Well, you would, you would wanna vote to, um, put this proposed article in, uh, present it, uh, on the wage and personnel at the town meeting.
Okay, so wage and personnel would do it, not the proposed?
So the article is proposed by the library.
Yeah.
Uh, but then it would also be, um, recommended, I should say, not proposed, recommended by wage and personnel.
Yeah, okay, so when we start that process, we would make that recommendation?
Yes.
Do you wanna do it now? Do you wanna make a recommendation?
So moved.
Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Corinne, Ms. Far is waving wildly.
Um, my concern is, at town meeting, people are gonna perceive that to be whatever the X amount of dollars that, that we're asking for. We're not asking for that money. We already have.
Right, it's already there.
That's, so does it have to be an article, really?
It, 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 it probably does need to be an article, but I think really the, the, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I just realized, I just jumped right in there.
It's all right.
Um, is, um, I think the devil's gonna be in the details and the way that article is structured, just be crystal clear. And then, of course, get up and say, you know, that, but I, I think that, you know, give people that language in the article, you know, this is currently in the budget. It's, you know, we're, we're taking, you know, two part-timers, you know, blah, 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 that, you know, but, you know, put that in. I mean, you've got actually a lot of it here, but...
Yeah.
You know?
I agree with all that. Okay, so we have motion, second, we just took the vote, right?
No, we didn't.
No, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. So we're all set? You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have Camp Kwaney. You're up, Frank.
Okay, so, um, we are in the process of just going through and touring up all of our wage and personnel for the next season. Um, so essentially what we are doing is we are changing, um, first off, the facilities manager that's currently in the wage and bylaws, um, sorry, wage and personnel matrix, um, strictly listed facility manager. I would like to name that to Camp Kwaney Facility Manager and it lists right now a salary range between twenty and forty-five thousand dollars full-time. Um, that's not the case. It's gonna, it's actually gonna be part-time, nineteen and a half hours for fifteen to twenty-five dollars an hour. The current, the current, um, facilities manager that we voted on, the board voted on, doesn't make twenty-five dollars an hour, but we're kinda just covering it so we don't have to come to town meeting for another wage and personnel for a couple, hopefully, a couple of years. Um, and then the Camp Kwaney Event Planner, this was set from fourteen fifty to seventeen dollars. We're gonna make that also from fifteen to twenty-five. You're gonna see a trend here in, in a minute. Um, the Camp Kwaney Caretakers from fourteen fifty to twenty dollars per hour, we also like to make that fifteen to twenty-five. Uh, Beach Director from fourteen fifty to twenty dollars an hour, we'd also like to make that from fifteen to twenty-five. Water Safety Instructor, um, is currently fourteen fifty to sixteen dollars per hour. I don't know what a water safety instructor does, but I'm sure if we looked for one, it definitely wouldn't be, uh, from, from fourteen fifty to sixteen dollars an hour. Uh, we wanna change that to from fifteen to twenty-five and then last...
Are you sure twenty-five is sufficient for that and it's similarly for the lifeguard? I mean, because we know that there's heavy competition out there.
There is heavy competition. Um, we know that the Y, uh, the YMCA was paying anywhere from, I believe it was twenty-two to twenty-seven or twenty-eight dollars an hour. Um, twenty-five is what we can afford.
Okay.
Um, so we're, we're going, we're not going above what we can afford there. Um, so the, the, the current, uh, we definitely wouldn't be able to hire one at fourteen fifty to sixteen dollars an hour, which is like currently in the wage and personnel. So people were laughing at us when we were looking for lifeguards last year and that was the pay for it. They were, you know, they were laughing at us. So we wanna change that from fifteen to twenty-five also. Um, and I just wanna make it clear to everybody, you know, like, the board knows, but anybody who's watching this meeting, all of those wages that come out of our Enterprise Fund, they're not taken out of a town budget. So we're not, you know, if we do any raises, we, we can afford it in our Enterprise Fund budget. We're not gonna be touching any town taxable or taxed income or, or, I'm sorry, um, uh, tax monies or anything like that.
My only question was whether or not we could afford it, and you answered that already, so that's good.
Yes, of, yeah, we, we're not gonna put ourselves in a situation where we can't afford something, so...
All right, any questions from the board?
No.
No? All right, we looking for, uh, another recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. You're all set.
Good work, thanks, Frank.
All right, last on the agenda is Chief Mix with his request. I think he's already explained this to us and why we shouldn't be scared of the ninety-dollar number. And he, I think he did a pretty good explanation for that. Does anybody have any questions related to this? All right, accept a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
All right, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, five-zero, we're good. Accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good.